Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Right before the meeting, I got a text from Commissioner Tuppo that usually is here. She received a call. She had to go home, so I don't think she'll be joining us for the meeting this evening, so we'll excuse her. There are at least one city council members here in the audience. Welcome them and staff. Thank you all for what you did previous to this meeting. There's several staff here in the, in the building as well. The first item on the agenda is an approval of our agenda for May 17th, Commissioners. If you don't have any changes or suggestions for a change, I'll look for a motion to approve it as is.
This is Shil. I would approve, make a move that we approve the agenda for this evening.
Anderson, I second.
We've got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved as outlined. Second item on our agenda, I'll look for an approval of our minutes from our meeting that we had on May 3rd, 2023. You've all received a copy of those minutes from Melody, and if there are no changes or additions, I will look for a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to, for that item as well.
This is Commissioner, Commissioner Mullak, I'm making a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes from the May 3rd meeting. May 3rd?
Yeah, May 3rd.
This is Shil, I second.
I've got a first and a second on the approval of the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved and on public record. Just for the record, anybody in here, any of the, these meetings are actually on YouTube as well. Anything in here will be out there for the public good for the future. Same with the minutes from all of our meetings in the past and in the future. So if you'd like to review any of that, it's there for your review. Item number three on the agenda is the opportunity where we have a chance to declare a reason for an abstention or a conflict. Thad, from a legal aspect, could you remind the Commissioners what would cause any of us to need to abstain or have a conflict this evening?
So state law on conflicts of interest focuses on financial conflicts, which is whether you have a professional relationship or a paid relationship with the applicant, or whether you have an ownership interest that might be benefited from the applicant, or whether your children or spouse have any of those. And so that's the main focus, is whether you have a financial interest. That does extend into whether you, for example, sit on a board or have a voting or a decision making interest with the applicant as well. And so, in other day, if you, your kids, or your spouse own anything or get to govern anything with the applicant, it's advised that you choose to abstain. You can choose to abstain for any other reason, though, but the state law says you must or should abstain for financial or, or decision-making conflicts of interest. We had a Commissioner for a long time that would abstain for anything that was closer than one mile. It was a personal philosophy of that Commissioner that if it was too close to home, you know, he was, you know, too close to vote. That was not unlawful. That was a personal preference of that Commissioner, and, and that's, that's how that Commissioner filled the role. And so you can abstain for any reason. It's your, it's your choice to abstain. State law is what I described it as, though.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Any, take the opportunity, if you will, at this moment, to abstain if you have any conflict, or by definition, what Thad had mentioned.
This is Shil. I need to abstain from item number 4A, as I will be part of the marketing team for that property. I don't have ownership in it, but I will be part of the marketing team.
Thanks, Doug. With, with that, it's my understanding, Thad, please clarify that Doug can take it, or take part in the comments, or everything except the vote, is that correct?
Correct.
The discussion?
Correct. He, he can remain present and, and participate. His abstention pertains to the vote.
All right. Doug, we welcome your comments on anything regards to that item, even though you won't be voting, so.
Are you sure about that?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I don't have any, anybody else have anything they'd like to put on the record? No. Okay. We'll go to the first item on our agenda this evening, item number 4A. This is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to, actually, let me back up for a second. For those of you that are here in the audience, that, there's quite a few that have come for the first time. What our planning commission is, we've all been appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council, where we are a recommending body, which, what that means is when we receive our packets from the city, they tell us what developments would like to come to our city. They, they go through the development agreements with us, and, and we look at the planning that goes into the different projects that you see out there, whether it's commercial, whether it's neighborhood, or the like. And what our job is, is to hear, talk about the land use, if the land use laws are being followed here in the state of Utah, some of the legalities of the developments that we see. And then we, for, for the most part, we recommend for approval to city council the project, or we recommend denial to the city council for the project. In my five years, I've seen them go both ways. I've, we've, we've sent through some for approval that were denied by city council, and they had more work to do. And there's a few I can think of where we sent through as denial and city council approved them. So some things happen between our meeting and city council's meeting that might change the project. So what our job is, is to hear the project, to vet it, let the public have some input on the projects, and then we recommend to city council our approval or our denial. And so that's what our, our job is. We don't design the project up here. We don't do maybe some other things you might have thought we do, but we're just a recommending body. So tonight, what this first item agenda is, as with others on the agenda, it's a public hearing and consideration to recommend to the city council for a zone change request. Z-2306, from agricultural 20 acres to a planned unit development commercial located approximately 3650 South Washington Fields Road. The applicant is Mainline Engineering, and I will turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval to change the zoning of approximately 19.3 acres located at approximately the northeast corner of Washington Fields Road and George Washington Boulevard. The requested change is from the current zoning of agricultural 20 acres, along with residential agriculture 1 acre, and they are proposing to go to a planned unit development commercial mixed-use zoning designation. The general plan designation is community commercial with the surrounding zoning of agricultural 20 to the north and south, residential agriculture 1 acre, and PUD to the east, and planned unit development commercial to the west. The planned unit development commercial request is for the purpose of developing the acreage into a commercial mixed-use development, as shown in the attached exhibits. And just to get your bearings on this photo, that is looking northeast there on the property. This, this here is George Washington Boulevard and Washington Fields Road, the corner there. The project is showing a proposed grocery store, bank, car wash facility, office building, two small food establishments, a larger restaurant, bottom floor retail space with apartment units above, and another five apartment buildings. The total apartment unit count is 41 bedroom units and 94 two-bedroom units, and are just under 52 feet tall. The apartment portion of the development is providing two pickleball courts, a swimming pool and hot tub, and a large pavilion area next to the swimming pool, and a large grass play area next to the pavilion. The project is providing some well-designed attributes, including the downtown Main Street feel, which runs, we'll call it north and south through here, if you can see my arrow bouncing on that. That's what they're calling the downtown kind of Main Street area. And most of the buildings are placed around the perimeters and parking on the interior of the development. The exterior finishes are aesthetically pleasing as well. Staff would like to note that the parking layout is cumbersome, with long-distance foot travel paths to both the restaurant areas and apartment units, as shown in the parking exhibit, which is attached to the report. Also, the residential portion of the project is showing a 21-plus dwelling units per acre ratio, which is above the dwelling unit per acre, per acre ratio in the standard PUD residential zoning designation, which only allows for 16 dwelling units per acre. The mixed-use opportunity for dwelling units was not intended to try and match the regular PUD residential dwelling unit per acre standards with commercial developments. And lastly, this project will need a well-defined development agreement, which is not completed and/or agreed upon at, at this present time. The planning commission has the opportunity to recommend approval, denial, or tabling of Z-23-06 for the zone change request from agricultural 20 acre and residential agriculture 1 acre to the proposed planned unit development commercial onto city council based on the following findings in the report. If the commission wishes to move it forward, the following findings and conditions would be appropriate to be attached to such a motion. And we'll scroll through the exhibits here, kind of highlight the
elements of. Eldon, can I comment real quick on that fountain on the corner? That is, that is something that is not allowed under the new landscape ordinance unless the city council specifically permits it after finding that it doesn't consume potable water. So that's, it's probably just something that's there for looks right now, but most likely won't be in, won't be an element of the project.
I, I did bring that up with the applicant. That's more of just a placeholder to identify the significance of, of the corner, and they are planning to change that. So this view would be kind of looking east towards Camino Real. We've got the proposed car wash directly to the right with some retail down below on the left and apartments up above. This is looking north to the grocery store, which could host probably possibly a hardware store and/or a pharmacy on either end there. This view's looking north from George Washington Boulevard up, up through their Main Street area. You can see they have a landscape median there, diagonal parking, a lot of landscape to kind of set things off. This is that corner area, which I was told will not host a water fountain, just more of a placeholder to signify the importance of that corner. Proposed bank behind that. We'll get into the elevations here. This is the, the bank with the drive-through. You see the finishes there? Another view of the bank. And this is the grocery store. This top image is the north elevation, so looking south, if you're standing at Staley Farms, looking, looking southwards would be the top image. One on the left is a west image, standing out on Washington Fields Road, looking into the development. See if I can zoom in a little more. And then this is the east. So if you're inside the development, looking out, looking west. And then the south elevation, looking north. Different angles of the grocery store. I would like to note on looking south, they have this coffee shop, which is kind of a nice feature to it. Takes away from that mundane wall along that north boundary line. Some office retail. The finishes include stucco, some metal, some black metal, and then some tiling is, is the smaller squares, kind of break things up. Office retail with the restaurant. Another restaurant view. This view would be standing at Main Street, looking into the first floor retail, and then apartments up above. Another elevation, the apartments and retail. This shows the car wash. Their elevations, material. So this would be looking north from George Washington Boulevard. This is what you would see from the street. Kind of a landscaping detailed plan. So we've got the apartments kind of at the perimeter here. Majority of the parking is inside, and you can see the amenities here. Large grass play area with a pool and, and pickleball courts to the right of that. And again, their mains, Main Street is running north and south here. This illustrates the entire site layout. The bottom right corner is, is a larger quick-serve restaurant with a proposed drive-through, and the parking. To the left of that is, is two smaller-scale restaurants. And just west of that is office space. And then as we cross the Main Street is the proposed car wash, all enclosed. And then the bank on the corner as well, with the grocery to the north. This exhibit highlights allocation of parking. So you can see all the orange is where the parking for the residents will be accommodated, with the grocery store, the bank, the car wash, all the different uses there. That's all of the exhibits there. I, I would like to turn the time over to our contracted architects, BGP. I think it'd be good to hear from them and, and understand the process that they've, they've gone through to, to get where we're at today. Will, Bill, are you guys, are you online?
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can, yes. If you want to just take a minute and maybe go through the project, discuss further in detail what I missed, any highlights you'd like to note, that'd be great.
Will, this is Commissioner Hanson, the chair. Before you do that, in, at the beginning of your remarks, could you explain to the people here in the chamber and people that might be watching this at home, your relationship with the city and how that came about? I know we've seen at least one other project that you assisted on, and so they need to know that you guys are here in a bigger scale than just this project alone. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, since you've had the longer relationship, it might be more appropriate for you to handle that.
Yeah, hey, I was on, yes, this is Will Barnes. I, I was on mute. I'm sorry. I was talking, Bill, and didn't realize I wasn't on. Thanks, and I appreciate the opportunity. We were engaged by the city to look at the entire area of the fields and to help establish design guidelines and design guidance for the entire area, which is seeing a lot of development interest in the recent past, sort of slowed down a little bit by COVID, but, but we have spent time meeting with the city, has been, have been out recently to the city of Washington and looked and met with, with many folks at the city to understand exactly what they're looking for. And I think that the overall goal is to preserve as much as possible of some of the, the context and heritage of the fields, and to not simply have sort of a suburban sprawl development occur without some guidance in there, pointing out sort of the, some of the more commercial areas over in, and the main arteries in St. George, and wanting to maintain streetscape presence, planning guidelines, and, and other things that, that will help the fields develop in a little bit more of a regimented manner. And so what we've been doing in the prior projects, there've been several that we've looked at, the Junction and Heritage Place that has, that you probably are familiar with. What we do is we meet at the, at the city's expense and help guide the developers in a manner that is favorable to them and to the city, and, and sort of set precedence there as the, as the fields area develops, that is consistent. And this is really one of the first major projects. The other ones have been much smaller. And in reality, this is one of the more important areas because there's not a lot of commercial space in the fields area. So, so we've spent a lot of time in the last couple of years looking with the city and with developers at how to establish the massing and the planning of buildings on the site, and we've hit key elements of the planning process and the, and the planning guidelines that, that help the applicants understand where the priorities are, defining the edge, addressing the street, the landscape, the sort of drive-throughs and types of buildings and, and elements that would be sort of detrimental to the overall development. So that's sort of a, a background on what we're doing and, and how long we've been doing it. Bill, do you want to add anything to that?
Sure. I, I might mention that Will's an architect, and I'm an architect and landscape architect. We both have extensive experience and have worked together for many years. But I think the key thing to point out at, on this site is the context. We are abutting two major transportation corridors, and, which usually speaks to commercial use. And the city approached us to work with the applicant to consider a mixed-use transitional configuration. And we've been working with the, the city and the applicant for several months, very collaborative, very cooperative process. They've made many, many changes and reacted to many of the concerns that the city had and concerns that Will and I had. And I think if you really study sort of the general layout, the substantial portion of the commercial has been pushed to the corner against the two major transportation corridors. And then we transitioned back towards the single family residential to the east by virtue of a mixed-use retail and residential, and then residential fully on the east side, along with a, a restaurant, which I think actually is across from the main amenity center, if my memory's correct. So the, there's been a lot of thought to this, a lot of time, as you can see in the documents. And from our point of view, we are very supportive of the applicant and the configuration and final plans that they have presented.
That was Bill, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Bill, thank you. I just want to clarify one thing for my own. The city approached you guys about coming up with mixed use in this as opposed to it being all commercial?
Well, I, I would say yes, they were concerned that there'd be a lot of, a lot of pressure to do that. And, and we were encouraging sort of a different approach that would be mixed use and transitional back to a single-family residential by, by virtue of the apartments. So yes, I think there was a concern that this would be fully commercial.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know if, any, if everybody here caught that, but there's a project that they presented to us, I don't know, it's within the last year or so, by Freedom Village there, on that road that now cuts back into the high school off of Washington Fields Road on your way to Stewki Farms. There's, that the Hoop Zone, there's some commercial piece there that they worked with us on. That was the first project they brought to us. So really, their overall goal, the way I look at it as a Commissioner, is they're trying to work with the city, at the city's expense, by the way, and he mentioned that, to come up with a cohesive plan for the fields area as a whole, because really, we're starting from dirt and going forward, as opposed to something that's already been there. So it's, it's interesting, and it should be interesting for everybody here. Probably most of you live in the fields or some area close to that, that the city has, has taken into consideration bringing somebody on like this. And so there is a lot of thought that goes into these projects before we see them. And so there is a lot of thought that goes into these projects before we see them, good or bad, but there is quite a few meetings take place before that. As far as another piece of education, when we have a project that comes to, every project that comes to us gets a score sheet that goes to all the different departments in the city. And they have a chance to review the project and to point out any issues that they might have with it. The projects, they go to the planning department, they go to the Hillside Committee to make sure that we're preserving as much as we can, the hillside protection, that we're not cutting too deep into hills, rockfalls and things like that, public works that goes over the streets, the engineer, the fire chief has a chance. A lot of times, we'll have issues with the projects being too small for a fire truck to turn around in, and so the fire chief goes ahead and reviews projects. Then we have Parks and Trails Department that reviews it, the Building Department reviews it, Washington Power reviews it, Dixie Power reviews it, and then the Economic Development Team, which I would refer to as mainly what we know as staff, also reviews that. And again, it's either green or red. If there's red, then we know there's an issue in that particular department. So if the fire chief says, I don't know, it's not going to fit a fire truck, we'll see a red come to us. This particular item this evening has a red on the economic development side. It's not too often that we see one come to us with a red, so I wanted to turn that to you, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot. Could you help us as a commission understand what issues are causing this to come to us as red, if some of them might have been resolved prior to this meeting, or if there are still issues outstanding that have not been resolved?
Absolutely. The main crux of the cause is the developer has certain requests of staff that staff does not exercise the authority to approve. So if you look at the roads that surround it, it's bounded on the west by Washington Fields, Washington Fields Road, and on the south of George Washington Boulevard. Both of those roads will require developer improvements. What that means is the roads that were built by the city on Fields Road and George Washington Boulevard were built when it was bounded by agricultural land. And so the city built the maximum width that could be built and funded by impact fees, but the city did not build out turn lanes, you know, deceleration lanes, curb, gutter, sidewalk and trails. Those are all things that we classify as developer improvements. In other words, improvements that are only needed because the use is changing from a farmer's field to a community, a shopping center or whatever the use is. And so the developer has asked the city to be able to participate on those. I shepherded those requests through the different, various departments. We analyzed the different areas and we, our analysis was for the question is, are there impact fees that the city has collected for these roads that are available to credit towards these improvements? And the conclusion of the departments is that no, the city's expended the impact fees for these roads. And so as a result, the developer would need to build the improvements at their own expense because the impact fees were already expended by the city to construct what exists today. And so that issue exists on both of those roads. Camino Real on the west also, or to the east also has some similar questions there. Another issue is because this is a proposal on, again, on an agricultural field, there is not a current collection trunk line for sewer or storm drain on site. And so the developer, frequently, we, our development agreement said the developer will produce all of the connections and valves and fittings and yada, yada, from the boundary of the property to everything on the interior. In this case, they need to go farther than their boundary because those services don't exist at this location yet, right? And so that's another area where they're making some requests that staff can't agree to. The city has a process for when projects don't reach the green status. They have to meet with the mayor and manager and just have a chance to make sure that they understand why they're left on red. This applicant has engaged that and participated fully at that process. Simply put, there's some things that staff can't resolve that they're requesting, and the city council may or may not be willing to resolve them in the direction they're requesting either.
Okay. Thanks, I appreciate it. The commissioners, I'll turn the time over to you for any initial questions that you have for staff or even possibly Will or Bill at this time. One question for clarification, that I want to make sure I understood this correctly, I believe it to be right. It's common and traditional that a developer pays for the roads that are outside of their project, correct?
So the tradition of the city is the city has a transportation master plan that says, that identifies the roads that are regional and necessary. That master plan then is what informs the transportation impact fee. So any impact fee the city collects on that transportation plan becomes what's called a, a, a what fund? A limited fund, a protected fund, what's the word, John? There's a word for it that means the money can only be used for those roads. Restricted fund, thank you. John's the brain of the city here. And so those funds go, get put into a restricted fund where they accumulate, and then when the time comes to build that road, it is either built by the developer because the developer's ahead of the city's schedule, or by the city. If the city builds it, the city pulls from those restricted funds to help pay for the construction of the road. If the developer builds it, the city credits the developer money from those funds towards the expenses the developer expended in building this road. Not all roads are on that master plan, so in this case, the road to the north is not a master planned road. So in that scenario, there are no impact fees that have ever been collected, assuming that that road needed to be built for the community. And so there is no impact fee credit available there, the developer has to buy, build and construct that road at their expense. George Washington Boulevard and Fields Road have been master planned roads for a long time. And the roads that people drive on today are improved from the old farm roads, and that improvement was made by use of impact fee funds that have been collected for those roads. And so in the case of those roads, the impact fees that have been collected have been expended. The city has built as much as the law allows us to build with impact fees.
So this is Commissioner Mitchell, I've got a question. So the roads that we're discussing end at this development, I guess in my mind, I'm thinking there's going to be a void from this development to where the road actually widens up currently, mainly through Staley Farm. Is that going to be that one section that's going to be avoided that technically is still going to feed this development?
You're correct. There will be to the north on Fields Road, the section of Staley Farm that is not before the council, what this developer, the city cannot require that they build it out along there. Also, to the east on George Washington Boulevard, there's going to be a little bit of a void as well. The Fields is a good example of this happening in the past, you know, our 2000 South Sandia Road, it shows what happens as this happens. You get some width, some curbed curb, some gutter, some sidewalk and some not. At some point, the city has the option to just exercise its discretion and fund the full build out on a road. The portion of Staley Farm that's not on the agenda tonight, they've got an agreement with the city that it indicates who pays for that build out. And really, it depends on whether, if the landowner needs it first, they pay for it. If the city needs it first, the city pays for it. And so I would anticipate that the city will have to watch and make a decision about those void areas. But you're exactly right, we don't get to make them build the whole road.
What about Eldon, are you aware of, in our packet, we had a packet, I think 35 pages here that I'm looking at, I didn't see a phasing map in here, is it all going to be built in one phase, or is there a plan for that?
There is a phasing plan. Let's see if I can scroll through the exhibits.
I'm wondering if it's color coded and I'm just missing the part that's saying phasing.
I don't want to misquote the phases, let me see, see if I can find it.
While you're looking, there is a phasing plan though, there's one that exists, multiple There we go.
Phase one includes residential, car wash, bank and the quick serve. And the proposed phase two is office, restaurants and the grocery.
Are any of the phases tied to road improvements, or would road improvements be required for any phase that started?
So road improvement still remains an issue that's not under agreement, that the city would like all of the roads in phase one. That's been our request. Of course, I've already described to you kind of the process that exists and the issues that the city council will get to help us resolve.
All right. Did you guys have any questions for staff? Okay. Think of some, if you have them, hold on to them. We're going to open this up to the public comment section of the meeting. The way that the public comment section works and the whole reason we have it is, first of all, it's Utah law, but gives you the opportunity as the general public to get your comments on the record. Your comments go to city council, they go to staff, like I mentioned, there's city council here tonight, there's staff here tonight. As they try to round out the edges on some of these projects, the public hearing section can be quite valuable. At times, it can get a little testy and quite invaluable. One of the things that as public you could do to make your comments very invaluable would be called public clamor, like clapping, yelling, throwing things. Nobody's thrown anything yet, but I'm sure it's going to happen. Maybe not tonight, but sometimes we get people on an emotional item and they come up and somebody will say something and everybody starts cheering and clapping. And that's something that works against you when it comes down to the court of law in Utah, if it ever goes that far on any particular issue, I'm not suggesting this one would, just indicating that your comments are meant to be respectful, we're happy to put them on the record, we try to keep everybody's comments to three minutes. And we did have a chance, the public has a chance to submit their comments prior to the meeting, and we did receive some comments. If you hear your name, it's a comment that we as a collective whole, city council and all the staff have received. I encourage you not to come up and read your comment, we have it, we've reviewed it, it would be doing yourself probably a disservice by doing that, just in the essence of time. If I mispronounce your name, I apologize, Kate Buchanan, Michael, I want to say Eads, John and Carol Jean Bishop, Elaine Schmidt, Tiffany and Paul Rumsey, Britt and David Nichols. And by all means, if you feel like you're hearing what the public is saying and you thought of something else in our meeting and you want to stand up, please do so. Again, the intent is to get it on the record. You might come up and want to ask a bunch of questions, we may or may not have the answer to, we'll try to answer those for you. But we encourage you to stand up, take your three minutes, say what you'd like to say about the project, what you think about it, what you like about it, what you don't like about it, whatever you want to say for three minutes, and we'll go from there. So please state your name for the record, Melody is our staff in the other room who's recording everything and taking notes for our minutes. So we'd like to get your name for the record, and please come on and go ahead. Once I close the public hearing, by the way, at that point, we just don't take any additional comments, so if you want to get your two cents in, this is your opportunity to do that for this or any other project that we're going to see tonight. So I'll open the public hearing, for anybody that'd like to come up and speak to this particular item, please come up and state your name for the record.
Ronberg, I live on the east side of Camino Real, and my main concern is the school at Majestic Field and the people that live south of George Washington Boulevard. That road is a zoo full of kids, and they're not big kids, they're little kids. And they're on bikes, they're on scooters, they're walking, and that's three times a day, morning, noon and at the close of business. And I think that exit that goes out to Camino Real is going to cause problems. And I'd also like to see Camino Real and no parking on either side of that road for those kids. And a good example of what that will look like is go up there behind Bucks where those apartments are, you could barely drive a car through there when the cars or trailers are parked on both sides of that road. So that's my number one concern.
Okay, my name is Lindsay Din, and I live just kind of up the street there off of, on Bronco Drive. Along with being concerned with the traffic on Camino Real because, like you stated, there are lots of kids walking to school, I also work at that school, and my biggest concern right now is with the apartment buildings and the number of increased students. The school is like beyond capacity, there's I believe around 740 kids at the school. Every classroom is full to capacity, including three portable classrooms. We're expected to get, I believe, 100, 150 more kids next year, which means we get two new portables taking up space on the playground. My biggest concern is with school boundaries, are we building a new school somewhere? How are we going to accommodate that number of apartment complexes, that number of possible students coming in? How is that going to affect that? Along with, completely different, obviously, the concern with all of this is parking, where is everybody going to park? Are there enough parking spots allotted for the apartment buildings as well as for all the commercial property, people coming in, coming out? Speaking to traffic on Camino Real, like everybody coming in and out of the apartments, are they going to be going back and forth on Camino because it already is kind of a zoo on there? And also, just for the record, I don't know if this is legit or not, or like even a thing, I can't say I'm a fan of a car wash right there, I don't think the car wash is necessary nor would I ever use it. Thank you.
Sherry, are you the one that's clapping back there?
No.
Somebody blew it, right out of the gate, first person.
I don't even know that person, did you see me flip him upside the head? Seriously, Sherry Tate. And obviously, this is an emotional thing for me, but a couple of concerns I have is, number one, the roads, like you kind of addressed, you know, that you want that to come in, but when will that happen? And I have my fillings on the road and I'll make an appointment with you that about that because I know that we've given up land for roads, and I personally don't feel the developer should be responsible for all the roads, so that's, I'm going to say that on a public hearing. And then I do feel like that all the neighbors, not just within 300 feet of this development, deserve to be notified, have a notification. I know I hear all the time, we don't put public notice signs out because they blow away. This is a big one. And everybody that lives in Sugarplum, up the road and all the other subdivisions, down by Stewki Farms, it's going to affect every single person. And I feel like we owe that to them as a family and as a city, that they are notified so that they can understand what's going on. And then the other thing, my really big concern is adjacent to our property line and where the grocery store, I can't, yeah. So we're putting in a half a road, and I know what that means. That means we put in a half a road and then down the road you come in and you say, okay, Staley Farm, we want you to give up your half to put in the other half. And I want to go on public record to say, we won't do that, so if we're going to do that down the road, we need to do it now. We need to make the adjustments for that now because we're not putting in the other half of the road. And then the other thing, this is, I've been hearing this for over a year, I've sat down with Will and Bill, I've sat down with the city, I trusted the city that we would get it right. And this is our first big thing, and all I've heard is we've got to get it right, we've got to get it right, this is the first big thing, everything's going to follow suit. We didn't get it right. This, to me- this, to me, isn't a walkable, darling, little downtown area that, um, I was shown a, a lot of times. Um, no offense to the, the owners or the people buying the property. I know they've worked their butts off and I appreciate them. We chose them, by the way, because we trusted that we could all work together, which we are. But I just feel like, um, a couple of concerns, a wall. Is there going to be a wall to, to block our farm? Obviously with apartments, our farm's really fun. So it'll be a city park. And so I just want to make sure that there will be a wall, and I know that comes down the road. And, um, and also, um, we plan on staying. And I know the city, in everything I see, you draw us in, in your master plan. We plan on staying. So hopefully you hear me on that. We plan on staying. And the farm's going to be there, and we want to work with the neighbors. I feel like we have. But I hope that when we do this project, and I know Will or Bill said this, that we wanted to pay honor and tribute to the Washington Fields. The Washington Fields is agriculture, or it was. This isn't paying tribute to agriculture. This looks like everything else that's being built, and we wanted to get it right, and we wanted it to be unique, and we wanted it to be something special. And it's not that. And I, I, I've already talked to the owner about it, so he knows how I feel, and I'm not going to cause problems, but I'm just saying, this is our one chance to get it right. Modern, white, whatever color buildings, that's not Washington Fields. And I hope down the road, we know why it's called Washington Fields. If not, let's just give it a new name and move on and forget about why we're here. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry.
Uh, Randy Staley.
The clapper, are you the clapper, Randy?
I, I probably should have. Uh, the wall on the back, the elevation on that back by Staley Acres Lot One, or Lot Three. Up there, what is the elevation back there?
I thought it was.
Cause we would need a wall back there concerning how we did the, uh, subdivision. That elevation would require a retaining wall on number three.
I thought.
Cause that's a six-foot field on the back of that lot.
I thought I had read in our packet that, uh, and that the city standards is six-foot wall. If there's any other information that is pertaining to this, I don't remember seeing it or reading it. Is there anything that we, any of us know that we can add to that?
I don't, we don't have the specific construction drawings and, and excavation type drawings that the city requires when plans come in. Um, if, if what you're saying is correct, and I believe it is, because you, you know that area as good as anybody here tonight, um, the staff will, will recognize that elevation problem and, and require that there be retention.
And having those, uh, lots there, I do, I follow with my sister through the farm. Do want a wall to block the farm to protect our legacy that we grew up in. Many of you have. We've ran through the fields, we do it, we play with kids, we do things. There's a lot of people out there. Um, I've met a few of the neighbors while we've been doing the little three-lot subdivision. Things have been good. Also want to know about the drainage. Um, what, what's going on with it as well as, um, the, I know you said a 20-acre and a one-acre, uh, piece. I would like to elaborate on that. What's, what's the one acre? And where is it?
I'll, I'll talk to the drainage. Um, this entire property has been flood irrigated or sprinkle irrigated. Um, sorry, this one's mostly been sprinkle irrigated. So it is subject to the same standard of any other vacant land that comes before the city's processes. The applicant will have to retain and detain flows on site. They'll have to install storm drain collection and, and, and delivery lines and deliver their storm flows to the trunk line that was designed a services project as well as detain and retain on site. And so they'll be subject to all of the city's rules and regulations on storm drain, collection, and flows. Um, you asked about the acreages. I'm not exactly sure what you're referencing. I think there was a time when the applicant owned one acre. As of today, I understand that their entities affiliated with them own about half of the acreage, but that the other half is under contract, and so that might have been a reference to the history.
That's why we're, we're just trying to figure out what that one acre meant.
I think, I think originally they owned just a smaller piece and they've, they've acquired as the process has moved along.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I could just add to that. I, I want to note the zoning. The current zoning is Ag 20 acres and then one acre. So we've got two different zonings on there, which I think Randy may have been referring to.
Hey, real quick, this is Commissioner Mitchell. Jason, I know in the past we've, those who are opposed, you've asked the question, what would you prefer to see?
Yeah.
Do you feel like that's?
Well, I almost said Sherry, and then I thought, I wanted to ask her. Three minutes? It'll be a 35 hours? I don't know. What do you want to say? Um, um, yeah, I mean, it's good. Yeah. If, if, for those of you that are going to, that will still come up after this, if you want to, add the piece of what you would like to see there. If it's not this, what would you like to see there? If it is this, then we know what you think about it. For those of you that have already come up, if you could do it in, uh, less than 30 seconds, I would like to hear maybe what you'd want to see. Sherry, that's a challenge. Alright. Uh, and you don't have to, uh, but we do in pre, past meetings. Clearly, when we have a meeting like this, we get people here that typically don't want something. If you want it, you wouldn't be here. If you don't want it, then you're going to be here and you're going to almost throw things, like I said. It hasn't happened yet. But people come and they want to express their displeasure, and so a lot of times, thank you, I'll ask, what do you want there then? If you don't want it there, what do you want there? Because the reality is, and the hard thing to understand in a lot of cases for a lot of people, is that development can happen, and the city, the planning commission certainly, and the city doesn't have the opportunity or ability to legally stop people from developing their properties. So the best thing we can do as a collective whole and body is to try to form those, uh, developments into something that we want for a cohesive city, or whatever it might be that we're looking for. So if you want something there, let us know what it is. We're happy to hear it. Sorry to make you stand there this whole time. It's a big buildup, so we're expecting big things from you. Go ahead.
Okay, no problem. Uh, Greg Schmidt, Bronco Drive. So four years ago, my wife and I sold what we thought was our forever home, because same sort of thing happened. Uh, developers came in, they, uh, put up apartment buildings and office buildings about two blocks from where we live, so we sold that built over on Bronco Drive, and, uh, I don't have a problem with the grocery store, um, you know, restaurants. I think those are awesome. Um, I'll be honest, that's going to be the 16th car wash within five miles of where we live. I mean, that's fine. Car wash is okay. It's the apartment buildings, uh, that drove us away from our other place, and I mean, that's, that's where the problem is. Honestly, maybe a rec center, maybe a nice park. I mean, we definitely could use a park over there. The apartment buildings is, is what we have the, the, the problem with. Um, and that's, that's really all I have to say.
Alright, thanks, Greg.
Alright, I'm the clapper. I got selective hearing. I, I missed that part, so. Um, I, uh, I've almost been a rock thrower too.
What's your name?
Oh, Cale Goodman. I'm on the west side of Camino Real. The farm is our backyard. And, um, it, it's already so crazy on Camino Real. You know, when I said I've almost been a rock thrower, there's just a lot of, uh, speeders and texters and drivers, and so I've talked to people in the city about like speed bumps. They're like, oh, the city doesn't love speed bumps and stuff, but that stretch of Camino Real is already pretty bad, and I, I expect it to get a lot worse with people cutting around traffic-wise, so. I just want to put on record that I'd like to, to have the city consider something for speed control there. I don't know if speed bumps are completely out of question, or, or, I don't know if the flashing signs even work or anything, but, um, I don't know. Do you guys have any plans for that as of yet, for that stretch of Camino Real? Or, you know, is there possibility of things like speed bumps to con, to, to control the speeding there?
Who wants to take that? Anybody? I don't believe there's any, uh, plans for any type of, uh, speed control, and I looked, John, he purposely didn't look at me. The smartest guy in the room we talked about earlier. Uh, he's in charge of our road questions, and okay. You want to yell it from there, or you just want to shake your head and say nothing's planned? What would you like to say? He hates coming up, but we like to get him up here.
Yeah, yes. Yes, speed bumps are not, um, an item that, uh, we would install on a street to try and control speed. That's just not something we would work through law enforcement for speed patrol. Um, yes, we can look at installation of the electronic signs to show people what, um, speed they're going and stuff, but yes, speed bumps is just not a, not a, an item that we install on public streets for trying to control speed, so.
Alright. Thanks, John. Don't get too comfortable, John. We'll have you come up in a minute, later. I'll think of something. I'll think of something to bring you back up.
Hi, I'm Kristy Lincoln. I'm on Majestic, right next to the elementary school. And I understand there was supposed to be talk of a stop sign going in at Majestic and Camino Real. So I wanted to bring that up really quick. But also the aesthetics of this place is not, like Sherry was saying, the fields. We were thinking more like awnings, more rustic type look. All these white homes that are going in all around me look terrible. They stick out like a sore thumb. They just look awful out there. So that's my input. The traffic on Majestic is really bad. It's been bad for years. I've been there almost 20 years. It's terrible. So the idea of a stop sign to slow some of those cars down and the aesthetics of this place would help out a lot for us neighbors.
Okay, thank you, Kristy. Hey, John, I'll get to call you back up again. Is there any plan for a stop sign? Uh, where she was saying, Majestic and El Camino?
Camino Real.
Camino Real?
Yeah, looking at what I've got here on the, on RGIS, we have stop signs on Camino Real at Majestic Drive. You talking about trying to make it a four-way? Yeah, we can, we can put it in our deal to do it. Sure, yeah, we can put it, we can do a traffic study on that and see if they'd be warranted and stuff and take a look at that.
I spoke to Crest, uh, last year when you were going to make our road all the way up to the highway, and he said that was somewhere in the thought process, but that's before we stopped. It's definitely necessary. That school is a problem that we're missing writing. I live right next to it, so I see a constant stream of cars slowing down, I'm sure they're naming up.
Right, so, yes, we can, we can work to do a traffic. We can, we can do a traffic study there and stuff and see what we, what we've got. Sure.
Kristy, thank you. Alright, everybody, here we go. 30 seconds, let's see.
Sherry Tate, 30-second stroll down a cute little shopping area. The thing that I just envision is we have all those vacation rental homes right there, and we get so many people walk up to the farm. And you guys kept preaching, we want this to be a walkable neighborhood, and I picture, and I'm going to say Park City, and people are going to go, ah, but just cute little old looking buildings. And I'm not saying farm buildings, I'm saying historical, like we all love to go to Panguitch and those little, those little nuggets that bring people to communities. I don't know about anybody in this room, but I go to the little nuggets in communities. Those are the places I look. And this could be a destination place if we do it right. People will come just to visit this shopping area because it's so stinking cute, and it has, gives us something, and I picture all those millions of kids riding their bikes down there and getting an ice cream cone in the ice cream shop and hanging out in there, and I just, this doesn't say that to me. And the other thing with the roads, at one time they were saying that you were considering maybe putting medians down Washington Fields Road. Is that a big, no, John?
I don't think we have that in our plans.
Okay, anyway.
Would you like him to come up to the microphone and state that?
No, no. I know you want him to. But, but again, it, it is the feeling of what that is, and, and they, I guess if I hadn't heard it from so many city people and Will and Bill, like, we got to get it right. And they showed me just that. I, I mean, I was looking at buying a train, so we could get the train to go into that village and give people rides through the farm, and, you know, I just think we, I, I know they've spent a lot of time and stuff, but I just feel like I'm, I'm not opposed to what's going to happen, you know? I'm concerned about the apartments, but we need them, so I'm just, think we can do better on how it's going to look and give a little more value to our, to our Washington Fields. Give it some respect that it deserves. I know that was more than 30 seconds.
32 seconds, nailed it. I actually don't know Sherry, believe it or not. I just know she looks like, I, I've never met her. Um, anybody else? Couple more.
Okay, um, my name's Steve Cornelius. I live on, uh, Rockwood and Camino. And when we moved in, we knew that that area was going to be developed. We didn't expect it to stay farmland forever, so we're not opposed to uh, some changes there. If I was opposed to something in this development, it would be the apartments, and particularly the density of the apartments. But I, I really appreciate and agree, couldn't agree more with what Sherry said about the aesthetics of the development as well. A big, modern, uh, building does not fit in that area at all, in my opinion. And to my way of thinking, um, and I have some experience in this, that, uh, I mean, looking at every quarter of this, uh, parking just looks woefully inadequate to me. And, and that brings up Camino, and it brings up Roadrunner, where people in those apartments will be forced to go if there's not a place for them. Uh, but my, my suggest, one suggestion that I have specifically, um, to this is that, um, ingress and egress off of Camino, uh, I would, I would, I don't know if this is even legal or, or code-wise, but I would say no ingress at all off of Camino and egress to the south only to avoid traffic on Camino and Majestic. That gives them two and a half places, uh, for entry and exit, uh, in addition to Camino. So if, if speed bumps aren't an option, I think that's something that could help immensely with, with traffic on that street. Uh, I agree with the, uh, car wash thing. I, I mean, we've got car washes everywhere. And, uh, and I, I think there could be a better use, um, than that, than a car wash. I, I also am a little bit questioning the phases. It seems to me that that doing apartments and car washes, um, will require that there will be construction in this whole area for the entire, uh, length of the project. And I don't know building, but, uh, it seems to me from what little I can, um, get from this, is that it would make more sense to split it either into quarters or to half the phases, instead of part here and part here, and then back here and back here. My two cents worth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, oh, excuse me. Elizabeth Simmons, 950 80s, Bronco Drive. When we first heard about this, we were told this would be an introduction to commercialism in our area, and it would be soft commercial. I don't see anything soft about this. Three-story, high-density apartments make all those people that live there not even a vested part of our community. I'd be much happier if they were townhomes or condominiums and the people that were there. I agree with this gentleman. There definitely needs to be a, um, closure to El Camino, which is as rural and residential as it can be. And the people, uh, already use El Camino to zip-zip. Uh, the car wash, that's a given, we just don't need it. A convenience store, a gas station, maybe. Everything should be on the new George Washington Parkway and the Washington, uh, Fields Road. And I can understand the need for soft commercial. Buildings like dentists and things like that would, would have shorter hours. But there is nothing neighborhood-friendly about this plan, and it does not even as they say, look. So I would like to see townhomes instead of apartments. I would like to see lower density. I'd like to see it closed on that. I'd like to see, um, we don't need another car wash. I'd like to see something we did. I think they need to go back to the drawing board, and I agree, this is being set for precedent for the whole thing. We have plenty three, four, and five-story buildings over by Lynn's and Smith's. We don't need it right here in such a rural area of million, and I hate to bring up money, but million-dollar-plus homes. We need to have something that's aesthetically pleasing. As Sherry said, I agree to her, it'd be wonderful to have something charming. Do we need another full grocery store? No, we really don't. We're within two miles to two major stores. Uh, do we have some place to get a Coke every day? No. That would be nice to have something like that closer, and, you know, but we need minor. This needs to be minor. Right across the street, for heaven's sakes, are horses. I mean, this is, and another thing that I've heard not one of you mention is how long is this project going to take? How long are our lives going to be disrupted by all of this in a very quiet rural area? And I hope you'll go back to the drawing board on this one and serve the community better. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. How many, how many more people do plan on standing up, just so I'll know? Three? Okay.
I won't be long. Cindy Lawson on Bronco. I take my granddaughter to school. I did for three years. I walked her to Majestic, and I would stop and make sure all the traffic went through. So a four-way stop would be great. Thumbs up on that one, we hope. On Camino Real, where you're turning on, she now goes to George Washington Academy. And as I drive her to school, before we had the signal there, that whole area was just really concerning trying to get across. Love the new signal there. Thank you. Another positive, awesome job. Camino Real, and is that George Washington Parkway or whatever that other name? If you're gonna make this a thoroughfare with the extension to, I think it says seven, we need a signal there. As I go and take her to school, I leave at 7:30 in the morning, and you have the junior high and the high school, that, the Crimson High, and all these kids now have these power scooters. And I go ten to twelve miles an hour. They come down those hills because to get to Camino Real, it's all downhill. And those kids are smiling from ear to ear. And I was one of those kids as a kid. I was a daredevil. And I can see the fun they're having. And so I go really slow. And you're always just putting on the brake, watching those kids. And they just come out and they go whipping around the corner. So my concern is safety for the children, because we don't want to go. We should have. We need to be able to realize that it's there and happening now. And then if we're doing apartments, a garage for them to put some of the cars in, because they will end up parking on the streets like they do at Dinosaur Crossing, where you can't get back behind that street anymore. Townhomes, where they have a vested interest, would be much better than apartments. But I would like to go so far as to say, why couldn't we put in a theater? Have you tried to get into a theater around here lately? That would be fun. I love Sherri's idea of making it a place where the kids that are zipping through on their scooters could go get the ice cream cone, could go get a Coke like Susan said. Make it a friendly environment where we don't wanna cook dinner. We'd love to go down and grab a taco. Something fun, sit out, visit with family and friends. So we love the idea of stuff. We just need to tweak it a little bit more and watch for safety for the kids. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mike Tate. On behalf of Staley Thelley Farm, I want to tell Melody to wake up and start taking notes. Real quick, a couple of concerns I have is, we all know, I'm gonna walk over to the monitor real fast to make this a little bit easier. We all know that this is gonna turn into an eighty-five-foot block. They're gonna give the exit all the way, this is gonna go all the way to Southern Corridor, right?
Yeah.
So this is gonna be a major road going all the way down to the intersection. Now, on the other side of the road, the south side of the road, Dixie Andrus owns that property. And we all know that that's gonna be eventually developed as well. So that's gonna add more traffic going on George Washington Boulevard, going down to the temple from the southern corridor. And then Kitty Corner is the Hoops property. And we all know that that's gonna be on this side, on this side of the corner. Over here, we all know that that's all a joint on the same intersection. That's gonna quadruple the traffic if we start, we wanna commercialize all of this. These are little things that I've, I have very deep concerns about is the traffic. We know that that's gonna be a main thoroughfare going down the temple. In fact, eventually, that's gonna go all the way out to I-15. And we know that that's the master plan is the River Road is gonna go, or George Washington is gonna go all the way through there. So it's not gonna be just a cute little neighborhood road anymore. It's gonna be basically, it's gonna be like River Road times two with all the traffic. And my last concern before we try to get out of here is triple-floor apartment. So it, don't get me wrong. So you got commercial on the bottom with three apartment stories on top? So that would be, or just two apartment stories on top? One? So you got? Correct. So it's a fifty-two-foot-high building that people paid millions of dollars to have views of the temple. We're putting a fifty-two-foot building in front of their views? Just something I would, I like to throw. I like the idea of maybe keeping it a little bit more low profile. So people paid a lot of money to move here years ago, thinking they had the perfect view of the temple and the rest of the valley. And we are gonna put a fifty-two-foot building in front of their view. At this thing, the traffic flow on George Washington Boulevard is a major concern with future development coming in. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike.
My name is Mike Harless. I live at thirty-one eighty South Bronco Drive. Totally agree with everything that's been set up to this point about the apartments, the looks, road concerns, and a lot of other things. There was just a little bit touched on, on curb water and flooding. I don't see anything on the thing showing where the detention pond would be for that facility. I know that George Washington, everything flows west. Camino Real and George Washington, at least Camino Real, to me, flows north unless they're gonna build something up. And that one concerns me because we can barely keep up with the bottom of that, which is down at the corner of Hartland and the Rusty Hill subdivision. That thing flooded out last year just with all the water off of Black Oak and everything else. The city had kinda put a curb in to try to help some of that. And then that ends up going over into Staley's Farm and everything. So, you know, that concerns me. And then Washington, George Washington driveway, if that flows north, that's just gonna dump into the Staley's Farm and everything else. If it doesn't, and it flows the other direction, once again, to me, you're gonna have to have that detention pond right there where the bank is. That's your low end. I'd like to just, you know, see more on the wa, you know, the stormwater and what's all there and everything.
So this all flows to the northwest. North and northwest is where it all flows. The trunk line that collects all of the stormwater from this area is up on thirty ninety south. And so it'll all flow and feed into that. I don't, I don't know that there is a detention basin represented on this exhibit today. The last couple of projects the city's had, the developer has chosen to actually install underground detention ponds. Maverick at Green Springs is one of those. There was a time when a bunch of yellow plastic components were on site. Those are now underground that hold detention water. They'll be required to detain. They'll be required to submit plans that'll either show it on, on the surface or show it underground. But yeah, this all flows to the northwest. They'll need to connect. All of their interior buildout is gonna need to have curbs and collectors and, and pipes that'll all need to flow to the northwest and feed into the, the trunk line on thirty ninety south.
Okay. Yeah, cuz I just, I see George Washington being a big collector based off of what we see with Black Oak. If there's a major flood, they just.
So George Washington also has a trunk line, but we don't make them flow their stormwater uphill. So their stormwater will flow downhill to the trunk line at thirty ninety.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Last call. Anybody else? Oh, bonus.
My name is Terry Cornelius. I'm, live on eight seven six East Rockwood Court. And, and that's the corner of Camino Real and Rockwood. As everybody else has said, I agree with everything here. I would like to see lower-profile buildings. The, the three-story apartments, you know, commercial and apartments is, really concerns me cuz that's right in front of my house. But the other thing, I'd also like to see some kind of a park for, we don't have a park in that area for any children that are, you know, wanna play. We, our grandchildren come all the time, and there's nowhere for them to play other than, we have to drive somewhere to get there. And the other thing that has me really concerned, cuz it's happened where we lived before, is with commercial comes increase in crime. And is, is there anything in place to help offset that? It's, it is a concern. Is it, it, we were told that by local police up north, that when we have commercial come in, there is an increase in crime. And we did see it in the neighborhood we lived in. And I would like to know if there's some kind of a plan in place to help stop it or take care of it. That's all.
All right, thank you. Kayla, looks like you want your bonus thirty seconds.
One last comment. Okay. So if this goes through as is, I'm just curious. I mean, there's, there's concerns about crime. There's concerns about apartments lowering the value of these homes and, which I agree with. But is it impossible? Or would it be considered if that phase of rusted hills on Camino Real petitions for like a private community, maybe a gated community, which would control the traffic as well as maybe the values? Gated communities increase the value, but apartments lower the value. So it could kind of, you know, possibly interact, you know? But I don't know if that's a possibility.
If the roads are private, then you've got the, the community association management. You can always gate your community. If they're, if they're public roads, we don't, we're not allowed to gate public roads.
And it is a public road?
Camino Real is, yeah.
It is, okay. All right. Thank you. Perfect.
Okay, I don't see anybody's hair on fire out there at this point. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. All these comments, again, are noted on the record. I'm sure Melody's awake out there, taking notes. And these will be submitted to city council regardless of the decision tonight from our body, and have a chance to review those. So the public hearing is closed. I'm gonna turn the time back over to, by the way, one thing I did wanna add, one thing that's very valuable tonight, it, it goes back to Will and Bill. They're still on the line. I expect that they are. This is what your community's saying. So I hope that you take some of that to heart with regards to any project that comes to this corner, whether it be this one or one in the future, or all four of these corners, to be honest with you, knowing that you'll probably be involved with each of them in the future. So just a heads up. No need for a response necessarily. I just wanted to make note of that. Commissioners, I'll turn the floor view for any questions, comments, concerns, anything.
So this is Commissioner Mitchell. But my understanding is we're just making the zone change right now, correct? They're gonna come back with final drawings, final plan. I mean, none of this design is final. It's just that we're trying to allow them.
So that's not correct. You, you're right that we're making the zone change. But when the zone changes to PUD, state law and city code allow us to, if they were just coming to say, we wanna change from A-20 to residential fifteen, we don't get to ask them to show us shapes and colors and sizes. But when they go to PUD, it becomes a bit of a partnership with the city. We get to ask them, show us your shapes, your colors, your sizes. And so what's submitted tonight would be the shapes and colors and sizes that become vested with the zone change. Now, you guys just recommend something to the council, so nothing will be approved tonight. But, but yeah, what's, what's present tonight is shapes, colors, and sizes that would be vested with the zone change. There's certain things that maybe don't become so. You know, let's say density's one of them. That, so there's, there's some variables in there. But yeah, what, what you see tonight, the city likes PUDs cuz we get to see all of that at the zone change phase. It does kinda raise the ante at zone change because we're looking at everything in addition to trying to decide whether it's appropriate to change this land from agriculture to some other use.
So the parking would become part of that, right? So the adequate parking for the apartments would be addressed at some point.
Correct.
And they'd have to follow the city's standards.
That, this Commissioner Bullock, maybe you can answer this for me. I know that when they, when Will and Bill give us their, their presentation, he said that we, the city wanted to see a mixed use. Do we not have enough apartments in our city? I know we tried to lower, I mean, we just had a bunch that we're fighting with up on Great Vine. I'm just not sure why we're wanting to add apartment buildings into a commercial area where we don't have as much commercial as I think we need in our city. So I think it's kind of a waste of good commercial space for our city. Is that, was that, the city wants that?
The city did not request them to bring apartments. Will and Bill and some of the design concepts liked the idea that there's some mixed use there. I don't think the city's taken any position as to whether we have enough apartments or not. That's what these bodies are for. The Planning Commission, I think, is really the one that answers that question. And then the city council.
Okay, that's, I was just curious if that's what body recommended, cuz it sounded like the city wanted.
So the mixed use, to me, the mixed use element was, we want it to look like a community, like there's more than just, you know, a big grocery store with the strip mall next to it, right? I think the city was wanting it to have a look and a feel that, that felt like there was more than just your, your traditional big commercial corner. That's what the city's perspective on mixed use was. We weren't asking for apartments. We weren't asking for certain floors or levels. That was at the discretion of the applicant.
Okay, cuz I just, like I said, I think the, the retail on the bottom and some apartments above is, is a neat concept that is, that they're, I believe they're doing it in downtown St. George. But that's a lot of apartment buildings that I, I don't think we need right there next to one-acre lots and all of that. It's bad enough. We don't have enough commercial as it is. And then to give up, what is that, nine acres? That's residential, something like that? And lose another nine acres of commercial? I, I, I don't like that idea.
This, this Commissioner Anders, I, I agree. My, my, one of my biggest concerns here is that, from the city's perspective, we, we have very few community commercial spots that are general planned as such. And, I mean, community commercial is the only way that we keep from becoming urban sprawl. You know, the reason we have so much traffic is because all of the commercial spots, St. George parks them right on the edge of, of our boundaries. So they get all the sales tax revenue. We get all the traffic. You know, that's, that's why the, the fields are so congested. And, and we, we need to keep our community commercial. You know, the last project we had was already general planned for big commercial and high density. You know, so that's why apartments were more of a fit there because they were already general planned for that. This area is not general planned for high density at all. You know, it's, it's general planned for residential with a pocket of community commercial, which is what this was supposed to be. And I worry that, you know, architecturally, it might, you know, and I agree that the architecture, you know, is, is, is more, a little bit more interesting if, if you have some of the mixed use rather than just a strip mall. But if we give away a fourth of this entire community commercial to, you know, apartments, then, you know, that's one of the few valuable things that, that the city has is, is some of this community commercial. So I mean, I, I agree with Commissioner Bullock that, that, that's a big concern. You know, maybe if we do have some mixed use, I mean, it, it ties into the, the other fact that, that we're way over the density limit, even for PUD. You know, I mean, by a long shot. Usually, almost every single project we come in, people are mad that there's so much density. And then the applicant usually can say, oh, but look, I'm way under the, the density requirements. I, this is one of the first that I've seen that were way over the density requirement in a project that's not supposed to be high-density residential. It's supposed to be community commercial. So I mean, those two things tie, you know, are, are huge concerns for me.
Doug, you wanna add anything before we?
Well, I'll add a little bit. This is Shiel. I, I understand what you're saying. I, I kinda look at, at both parties of, of what's happening here. You have to make the numbers work, for one thing. And, you know, the seller of the ground made good money. I'm not faulting them on that. But you do have to have a return on your money. And the quickest to do that and not hold it forever is, the apartments are gonna fill up because they're in need right now. They're gonna fill. We're wanting to get a grocery store. We haven't secured one yet, but, but we're working really hard to get a small grocery store there. The, the car wash is a new flavor of a car wash. It's more of a luxury car wash that's, that's indoor. that's indoor, that is hidden, you won't see the vacuums outside, it's all contained within. These retail underneath the apartments, it's a pretty neat concept in California, it's hard to lease here in, in, in Washington Fields, it's gonna be really hard to find somebody to lease that. You know, there's, there's only so many insurance people and so many, you know, people that'll do it, and they're not gonna pay, uh, sales tax either, because they're just providing a service, so, uh, you know, to fill this up with, with a commercial development that everybody wants a big box, or a mid-box, or a REI, and a Trader Joe's, we're all dreaming, because they're not gonna come here, they're gonna come here eventually, we're working our tails off trying to get them, but they're not committing today, and, and there's other places that are probably better suited for it. So, uh, I, I think we're pretty lucky to get the attention from some of our tenants looking at this property. That's one reason it's, it's phased the way it is, because we haven't secured a grocery store, we haven't secured a, a real sit-down restaurant, so we gotta do it in phases, phases that works for the developer, phases that works for the city. So I, I think we have to be careful what we're desiring, I mean, it, it would be great to put a, a walkable, fun farm thing here, but be careful what you're asking for, because you're bringing more traffic and you're, you're talking out of both sides of your mouth, you're wanting more, more of, of people to come through and visit this unique center, but then you're, you're talking that you don't, you don't want to have the traffic, so I'm confused on that. I, I think, I think the developer, unbiased probably, and you're all gonna think I am, but, uh, Will and Bill worked hard on this, they did exactly what Will and Bill, Will and Bill wanted, and what they were directed from the city to do, and so, uh, that's where they are, so I don't know what else to add to that.
I'm just proud of you for not swearing tonight.
Yeah.
We, we joke about that too often, he and I. In my opinion, as a commissioner, uh, with the most tenure on this commission, actually, I've seen a few projects, I've seen these developers come in here before, um, with regards to putting a project in another part of the city, for me, the project has difficulty getting out of the gate because of what I saw in our flow chart, that it gets to economic development, which is the main crux of our staff, that are not recommending that we put this through, and that there are some issues that need to be addressed, the development agreement's not in place. With regards to the phasing, I, I wrote on my paper here, it's interesting to me that the two most popular, I'm sorry, the two least popular things from the public comments that were submitted and what was spoken of here this evening are in the first phase. I, I think I would echo some of those comments, that I would have some issues with that, I live not that far from here, uh, in the general area, within maybe two miles. I'm excited for a commercial to come in here, it's gonna come on all four of these corners, it's gonna get really busy, so anybody in here that thinks that this isn't going to be busy, I encourage you to change your thinking on that and get involved with what the city's trying to bring in, but all four of those corners will be, uh, developed here probably in the next ten years, in my opinion, I don't know that it'd be factual, but I think with the growth that we've seen out in this area and, and, and the way that, um, things have been added to the area, we will see the growth come, so it is coming. Happy to be on the commission and be a part of the, of, of shaping it, I don't believe this project is ready to come to us, and certainly not ready to be sent to city council with, uh, vote for approval, is my opinion.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I'll just add some of my thoughts, I, I do have the concerns of the road, I think I would like to see more of that resolved, too, I guess, prior to moving forward, I think that there's still those questions, which is part of the, the green lights that were present, or the comments that were from the city, I think that needs to be worked out. I just don't like the parks, you know, half roads and all the mess that comes with it, I'd just like to see it clean, developed, traffic flowing.
This is Commissioner Anderson, I, a couple of other more, I guess, details on the plan that I, I think, one, and quite a few people had mentioned this, and I think this is, uh, a legitimate concern, um, I would, I would eliminate the entry-exit out of the parking area onto Camino Real, um, I mean, we, Camino Real is, is, you know, a main feeder into all those communities, but it's, it's a, it's a narrow road with driveways on, on the whole thing, you know, it's not a collector road, at least it's not a, a large collector road. I think that directing the traffic, you know, out onto the main roads, either Washington Fields or, or George Washington Parkway are gonna be a lot better suited for the traffic and the people coming here. I think that would be fairly easy to do here, even if you just have a walkable entrance there where people from the neighborhood can walk in and they can come to the shops or whatever, but it's not a road going over that way. I think that would be better use of that space, I think for sure, we need to try and minimize that. And I, I understand some of these comments from that, I mean, my, my, my six-year-old, he flies down Camino, or down the hill onto Camino Real every day, going to school, and he's already been hit by a car this year, so, and try to tell a six-year-old not to fly through the road is kind of hard, but, but as people had said, when people park on the side of the road, then what the kids do is they go right down the middle of the road, and, and granted, they're not supposed to go down the middle of the road, but it's what happens, and I think, again, directing the traffic from the commercial area onto the major collector road is a smarter thing to do, for a lot of reasons. The, uh, I do think that, as, as Sherry Tate said, I think that for sure there needs to be a block wall, uh, in place between steady farms and the, the amenity area there, and, and if there is, you know, any elevation changes, that, that they need to be retained as part of this project, and I know that, that's not really, these aren't construction drawings, but, but we need to have that in there, that, you know, any elevation changes are, are retained, and the block wall is, is there in separate, uh, to, to clean that up. Anyway, my last comment would just go back to, if, if we are gonna do mixed use, I think at a minimum it needs to meet our PUD standards, even if that means, you know, we, we lop off the third floor, or, or whatever, you know? I'm not sure how, you know, that's up to the architecture, how they want to do that, but I think at a minimum, if we are gonna do mixed use and give up that community commercial, then it should at least meet our standards and not be over, because if we, if we allow it to go over by quite a bit, you know, by five units per acre, they're setting a precedent for every other project to come in, then we might as well just raise the, raise the density standards, so, those would be my recommendations, and I, I honestly think that we should table it until they meet these concerns, I don't think it's, it's ready to go to city council.
Okay. One of the things I want to do, the applicant, I believe he's here tonight, would they like to speak to this particular item? I'll give you a couple minutes, if you'd like to get up and speak, and please state your name for the record.
As, as he's walking up here, um, I know we, they don't have the quick-service restaurant designed, because they don't know what's coming in yet, um, but that it should be designed to match what other, the other buildings are, you can put your address or your sign on the outside of that building, but the building, I've seen many of them match the existing buildings, and not have one that stands out all on its own. I mean, if you drive through Springdale, you, you'll, you'll see that or those other ones, they have restaurants and stuff that are matched, even though they are fast food ones that will match and go into there, is, is my opinion on the community commercial, on that quick-service restaurant. I agree.
All right, thanks.
Hi, Taylor Ricks with Mainline Engineering, I'm representing the applicant as the civil engineer, I'll just make note that the applicant is here as well, uh, and Derek Wiggins, the architect, and so I would like to just speak to the items that have been raised specific to the civil layout. First of all, there's been a lot of concern around Camino Real, I'll just note that Camino Real is a sixty-foot residential collector, which per the city's transportation master planes, a two-lane facility with four-foot bike lanes and six-and-a-half-foot parking shoulders that are designated for parking, so I know there's some concern about parking on Camino Real, but per the city's standards, it's intended to have on-street parking. The developer is not opposed to eliminating the access onto Camino Real, they're in, they're currently contracting with a traffic engineer to conduct the traffic study, it'll be a level-three traffic study, and that traffic, traffic study will indicate whether eliminating the access on Camino Real would be appropriate, given the trip generation, so I don't think that's off the table, but just a note of, of where that's at. I know that there's been some concern about site distance, particularly to the temple, uh, we were aware of this and drew some site triangles just earlier today, so Roadrunner, the, the north line of the development is approximately at Roadrunner Drive, um, so any homes north of Roadrunner would have an unobstructed view past the development to the temple, there are about five homes on the south side of Roadrunner, but it, they all face north, so it'd be the side of the home that faces the temple, so we don't believe that there's any site obstructions with the current proposed uses. Speaking to parking, I know that's another big concern, I'll just note that the apartment units are all, uh, parked per code, so one-bedroom, two-bedroom and guest parking all have code parking, uh, there's no allowances made on the parking there. And then, we had an exercise with Bill and Will earlier today, where we drew some different boundaries around the apartments, um, the twenty-one units per acre, which is obviously a concern, was based on a boundary right down the building lines, uh, enclosing that northeast corner, Bill and Will, I don't want to speak for them, but they had suggested that if this was a greenfield develop, development for the sole purpose of the apartments, you would reasonably include that east-west, uh, roadway as well as a portion of the main street, um, by doing that, we were in the neighborhood of sixteen to seventeen residential dwelling units per acre, uh, so I think there is some, um, adjustment we could make there just on the boundary in order to get closer to the code density if this were a PUDR. I think that's most of the things that I noted, uh, the only other thing that I wanted to mention, and I think this goes to both some of the public comments, as well as Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Mitchell, some of the concerns you had about the economic development being read in the application, and in case there was any confusion, my understanding is that the only reason that is read is because the developer is asking for certain concessions that only the city council can grant, and so staff does not have the ability to grant those concessions, and so tabling, um, I, I can't speak for the applicant, but I think tabling isn't going to resolve those concerns until city council can hear it and weigh in on those issues. Um, that's all I have from a civil perspective, any questions regarding the civil? Okay.
Can you, I don't know if you can, you block this off, it might be too close, but can that be open for ingress, egress?
We could work with John on that, so you've got about eighteen hundred feet between Washington Fields Road and Camino Real, I think ride-in, ride-out is four, four hundred? Three fifty? Three thirty? So yeah, it would be reasonable to put in, put a ride-in, ride-out. Yeah, and to the comments that have been made, the more that we can put traffic onto the two arterial roadways instead of a, a residential collector would be preferential, so, any other questions?
This, this Commissioner Anderson, I, I agree, I think a ride-in, ride-out, anywhere we can put one is, is helpful. I will say on the, the exit on the Camino Real, I mean, that would be an automatic no-vote for me if it's not, if it's put in there, even if you have a traffic study saying it's okay, so, just put that out there right now. The, also to your comment about, you know, being able to, to massage the numbers to make it work if you include roads, but the problem is, you said if this were a, a PUDR, but it's not a PUDR, you know, you're asking to carve out, again, like I said, community commercial and put in residential, so at a minimum, you need to meet the, the, the density requirements are there, so I, I don't think that, that, you know, massaging with the numbers to, to make it work is the, is the right approach.
Understand, and maybe I misspoke in how I described that, I'm just saying that there's no hard boundaries within the limits of the subdivision, so you create where those boundaries are, and you could make a reasonable adjustment to the boundary and fall within the zoning density.
I, I would err on reducing the density.
Fair enough. Any other comments?
And then my only other thing would be with regards to your, your comment about the developer agreement, the problem I have with, with saying we wanted to go on to city council so they can weigh on it, is that staff has already reviewed it and said that there's no impact fee money to pay for, the city's already used all of it, you're asking for a waiver for them to then come up with taxpayer dollars to pay for the road for this project, so it's, it's not a matter of we need to let city council weigh in on it, it's a matter of, s- staff already said there's no money there, and you want city council to give you free money to do it, so I think the developer agreement needs to be in place before it comes to planning commission.
Yeah, and I can let the applicant speak to that more, but there has been some new information just in the last day that I think will inform that discussion.
Got it, Taylor, thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, is there anything you wanted to add to that comment about, um, what Taylor had mentioned? I want to put words in his mouth or rephrase it, because I won't do it exactly like she did, but it sounded like that maybe needed a comment from you.
What comment are you referring to?
With regards to, and Taylor, I might have you come back up again, because I don't want to misspeak what you said, because I think it's important. I think it's important that we all get this right, and I want to take your comment out of context. With regards to, so the, a concern that, that I have, and I think you referred to Commissioner Mitchell, I have the same comment, is that we've got a red on here, right? We don't see that very often, and so the red to me, in talking with, uh, some of the staff and city council, uh, down to the mayor inclusive, is, I understood this to be something that we would like this, I don't want to put words in their mouths either, I would have liked to have seen this get buttoned up prior to it coming to us, which I think would be a normal course of business, and if I understood you correctly, like, again, I don't want to put words in your mouth, because what you said was good, and it made me question my own knowledge of what's happening here, is, could this not have been buttoned up prior to this meeting, because staff can't give the allowances they're asking for, that only can come from a council meeting? Did I understand that right?
Yeah, that's accurate, and Taylor and I go all the way back to the base section at Pineview Choir, so, and, and we've, we've met together a lot on this too, so.
Do you want to sing your response?
Probably better not.
Would you like that in the Johnny Cash, or the? The red on this is not for lack of effort by the applicant or the staff, right? It's, it's, it's not because we haven't tried, um, the applicants individually, Taylor i- in his role as their engineer, um, their attorneys of all's put in the time to try and work on those, um, I'm sure that Taylor would say it absolutely could have been resolved, the city staff would have agreed with me, and I would say it absolutely could have been resolved, Taylor would have agreed with me, right? And so, the nice part about planning commission is, you have a land use perspective, but you never have to look at development agreements and decide about budgetary stuff, um, I would just encourage you, you know, you've noted it, but the council is who really gets to decide whether this is a development agreement they want for their city, they'll look at your comments on the land use perspective, look at the public's comments on just the public perspective, and then they have to wrestle with the contract perspective as well, but, but yeah, I would suggest, don't hold it up at this level over the contract, the contract wouldn't be signed tonight, even if you all unanimously said move it forward, right? The contract still is not, wouldn't be signed even if it was perfect and green, um, but this is one where, um, we're not recommending denial, we just cannot recommend approval because those details need to be resolved before it does get approved.
Okay. You said it better than I could, yep. That's why I look that way most of the time, I appreciate both of you. I, as a, as the chair of the planning commission, cannot make a motion on items, and so this is when I look to the rest of the commission here, absent of Sheil, uh-oh, we've got a late entry.
He's also worked for the applicant, yeah.
Okay, I'll go ahead, please state your name for the record.
Derek Wiggins, uh, architect with Reflect Architecture, just wanted to address some of your guys' concerns. So the first one would be the, the colors of the buildings, I know the color white has been a concern, and it is a concern of ours as well, and so I don't know if Eldon, if you could change to one of the renderings that maybe shows from a, more of an eye view from what a pedestrian would actually see. So for example, you can see the grocery store there, and the bank is Eldon slipping through those, there's actually very small amounts of white, uh, because we were highly discouraged from using white in prominent massing, and we feel like the colors that we've selected are harmonious to the local region, uh, the white that you're seeing on the bird's eye view, uh, which was the first rendering that was shown today, the white you're seeing is the TPO, or the roofing membrane system, which wouldn't be visible from the standard view of a normal pedestrian walking. view of a normal pedestrian walking in a vehicle or in the surrounding residences. So we've actually opted to go with the sandstone beige, brown, some minimal ivories and some charcoal colors that we feel again, fit with the local environment. The apartments, uh, we like to keep in mind that we feel as the, you know, represent the applicant, not to misspeak for them, but they are a supporting element that make the rest of this happen. And so I'd just like to kind of note that for you guys as well. And then the last item would just be the quick service. The reason we've left that blank is we want to leave that open to as many investors or future tenants as possible. And we feel that if we dictate more or less their design standards at this point, we're going to severely limit who could come to this, to space because there are quite a few franchises and prototypes that are fairly strict on, on how their building looks. And I also think that there is an opportunity for the commission and city council to require the, whoever occupies that building to come back and present one last time their proposed, uh, material palette and elevations. And so, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We've got one more. Please state your name for the red.
Connor with the, with the development. I want to just talk about a few more of the, the items that were brought up. One was the parking. Um, we are for the whole development, for the apartments matching the two bedrooms have two parkings. The one bedrooms have one and a half. And then I believe the code is for every, uh, three and a half houses, you need one guest. So we do hit the parking requirement per the code. And if the staff wants Bill and Will to speak to the, the density in the road, uh, I think they're willing to do that if you want them to speak at all to that. Again, this was part of the transitional development going instead of, you know, from a Home Depot or a liquor store. Those are some of the applicants that have wanted to come here. We're trying to transition from, I know it was on record saying they're one acre houses, but there are quarters and thirds, and then up at the top there's half. So there is kind of a transitional from the top down to this development, kind of to transition. And one other thing just to note, um, I don't know with the parks department, we talked about right in, right outs. This is, there is a master plan trail going under those high, uh, power poles on that road. So there is a master plan trail through the parks department that go through there. So I don't know how that dictates, um, the Camino Real. And to point what Taylor said, again, we are open to Camino Real. Uh, it just depends on the traffic study. I think that's it. Thank you.
Connor, when you mentioned a liquor store, I saw this lady pass out back there. You might want to check her.
Yeah. Again, those are the alternatives. And, and so we're trying to make it, like you said, in conjunction, we've been about 16 months with Bill and Will. One person said a gas station. I mean, we had a gas station queued up, but this was not what was wanted. That's more of maybe the other corners to the west. So again, I guess our intent, uh, a lot of our design team has either lived to the east of here or close to the west. So we understand maybe more so than an outside developer, this whole traffic and everything, we're trying to, trying to do the best we can with that. Thank you.
All right. Thanks Connor.
Just real quick on liquor stores. Because the law matters here, there's a lot of private liquor stores in people's garages and kitchens in our city. But the only liquor store that could be allowed is the state liquor store per state law, the state, the state has reserved themselves a monopoly on that. And you won't be surprised that the state believes that it is not subject to local zoning on where it locates those. So.
They can just force it in a particular area?
They're smart enough to not force it, but their legal position is they're not subject to local zoning. Yeah.
Anybody pass out on that one? Yeah. Uh, go ahead and state your name for the record.
Quinn Allgood, applicant. Um, so there's been a couple of things based off of the apartments. And a couple of comments were made about, we have a ton of apartments. If you actually look at the geographical area of the Crimson boundaries, there's actually not enough of them. For the demographic of Crimson, it's a very, uh, highly populated, um, area with a lot of money compared to some lower housing income. So it's a, it's an area that would actually very much benefit, um, the schools and the community around that just for the apartments, uh, and per se, and just kind of going along with that as well. You know, we're going to speak again to the, the fact of a buffer zone and that transition instead of just going to the big box retail aspect of things. As far as phasing goes, we are not opposed. In fact, have actually since changed, um, the car wash in the second phase. I know that's a concern and kind of something that was mentioned. And so that is something that we've actually worked on within the development agreement about changing that, um, into that second phase.
But hey, uh, real quick Quinn, what, what would still be included in the first phase then? If you take the car wash out, is it only the apartments at that point?
No, so it's, it's the, um.
The bank? I can't hear you.
Okay. So what we have currently in the development agreement working with the city is the bank. The, we have it labeled as quick serve, but if you look at maybe like the tropical smoothie pizza hut down by Lenz, it could turn into something like that with the goat haircut. We have people queued up for that. And then the, the apartments, apartments, quick serve and the bank. And we'd love to put the grocer in first whenever they come, right? They're meeting next week with a couple. So, so yeah, and the liquor store.
All right. Thanks. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, thank you for that clarification there.
That might be the most heritage thing you're building.
The only thing else to note on this is just, um, the benefit to the city and then sales tax revenue that can happen with all four of these corners that the city's looking at. It's a great benefit for the city as, as mentioned before, uh, all the sales taxes going to St. George, um, instead of Washington. And so that's something of a concern and something that we're trying to incorporate and make sure that we do a good job in bringing those to our city. So thank you.
Thank you. I think we've heard from all the developers and the staff. Man, it better be a good one. I never allow this. Go ahead. Oh yeah. Say it to Mike, just in case it's, it's brutal, we can make fun of him.
Steve Cornelius, I'm not going to throw anything.
Okay.
They said they had sufficient parking for the apartments. I'm just wondering which spaces are included in that count? Is it just the ones inside of the apartments? Does it include some outside of the apartments?
I'm going to go ahead and go on a limb and say, yes, it includes ones in because they wouldn't be able to add the ones out like from the grocery store and stuff like that would be not expected. Taylor, you might have a better answer.
Eldon, can you pull up that exhibit that shows the parking hatch? Right there. So all the parking in, in the orange area would be required. So you get, you do get a portion to the west of the apartment retail area.
So if somebody lives in the apartments, they can park on the far left if they wanted to.
Correct. And there's, so that, that building that's just west of main street has lower floor retail, upper floor apartments.
It's, it's a little more than that chairman. The apartments to be approved as their manifest must have parking spaces all the way to the edge of the orange is what that's saying. So that's the required parking. And staff has had some comments on this. I know Eldon and Drew's department feel like that there might be that some of those might be too far away from the residential units, right? But yeah, the orange is indicating the required parking for the residential. Not necessarily where residential may or may not park. It's, it's parking spaces that are counted and allocated as required for that many units.
That was a 10 pound grenade. You thought it was going to be quick, but.
No, that was a good clarification. Yeah.
Taylor, if you wouldn't mind staying there for just a second. Commissioners, you, either side, do you have questions, comments, concerns, given that has come to light? I misunderstood.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I, I think there's your easy answer. That's how much density you need to cut, to cut. Is at least the parking area that's shared with the, the grocery store.
So cutting the density that would wipe out the far left of.
At least those, I mean, there's about 80 units there, you know, at least the. Which reduce the density to where they, this, this, this and this along the commercial.
But the problem is Commissioner Anderson is that the grocery store doesn't need those stalls. And you have living spaces in the building west of main street and they need somewhere to park as well.
No, I get that. But if you're, if you're justifying, you know, the, the density, which is five units per acre over what it should be by going into the grocery store, uh, I have an even bigger issue than I did before. So again, I'm not, and I'm not opposed to, to housing and, and multifamily by any means. But again, I, I, we need to preserve the community commercial aspect and we don't want to set a precedent for, for this sort of thing. So I mean, that's, that's an easy answer to me is you've helped alleviate the parking thing by reducing, you know, density.
The, the applicant just whispered in my ear that they would prefer a denial or an approval over tabling. They just wanted to let that be known.
Okay. Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
Uh, this is Bill Linsickam. Can you hear me?
Nope. Just kidding, Bill. We can hear you. Okay. Go ahead.
I, I'd like to make one point of clarification because I think there's confusion over the density in this diagram. You would typically do an allocation for access for an apartment deal like this. And it really is, is not showing the access. And so when we considered this within our boundary of apartments, we considered main street as part of the apartment boundary, for lack of a better term. And if you use that, we're, we're at 16 and change. So it's sort of, you know, we're not manipulating this to make it work. It's the reality that the apartments have to have access. I've had this exact condition with retail. Flanking an entrance to apartments. And it really is the apartment entrance that is allowing access for the commercial versus what's demonstrated here. The, the commercial is allowing access, um, to the apartment. So again, again, it's not a manipulation. It would be a typical approach to me. So I think there's a shortfall in land allocation for the apartments when you consider the real access need. And therefore, if you do consider that, the density drops, uh, you know, to closer to 16. I, I forget the exact 16.2 units per acre. So I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions regards to that? Taylor, you mentioned, I already forgot. Did he already leave? The, yeah, grab a chair. Um, you had mentioned the applicant whispered in your ear, they would prefer a blank over a blank. Uh, what did you say? Did you say?
An approval or a denial rather than tabling?
Okay.
They want to move to city council.
Okay. All right. Uh, sad with, um, commissioners, do you have any other comments or questions or concerns or things to be brought to put on the record? With, uh, Tupoe not being able to attend the meeting this evening, could you tell me what constitutes a quorum? How many votes?
Yeah. So the way the, the way the planning commission is constituted is we have five regular members and then one that we call the alternate. Commissioner Tupoe is one of the regular seats. She's not here. So Commissioner Mitchell, as the alternate would just fill that. A quorum of the planning commission is three. You'll need three to vote. If there is only three voting, you, they, they'll need to be unanimous in whatever direction the motion goes for anything to pass.
Okay.
And so with Sheil indicating he intends to abstain, that leaves you with four. Anybody else wants to abstain for a personal reason? That leaves you with three. If you have another abstention, we, we can't even pass a motion. But if there's three, three that are voting, you can hear and decide a motion. And then whether it passes will depend on the, the vote.
Okay. For a personal reason, I'm going to abstain from the vote this evening. That leaves the three commissioners to vote on the particular item. I wanted to get direction from Thad, just so you know where you stand. And talk about that however you need to, but I can't make a motion, but I'll entertain a motion if one of you can come up with one. And the applicant requested, as you heard, or I think would prefer denial over tabling. That's what I understand.
So this is Commissioner Anderson. I'm going to make a motion against what they said. I'm going to make a motion to table. And here's why is because they want us to deny it so they can disregard what planning commission says. So then they can just take the exact same design to city council. And it's happened over and over. This is a project that's a nice project, just has a few tweaks that need to work on. And it needs to be addressed and coming for planning commission in the correct way. So I'm going to make a motion to table Z dash 23 dash 06. For the, the following reasons. One, that the developer agreement be finalized with the city first. Two, that the, the entry and exit onto Camino Real be removed. Uh, that the density be in line with our P U D standards. And that the, uh, the block wall and retaining, uh, items between stately farms be noted on here. And what's our next available date?
Uh, be June 7th?
So be table till June 7th?
The following one would be June 21st.
I guess June 7th or 21st? Yes. You, you can answer that question. Do you want the 21st or the 7th? But, but I made a motion, just saying, I, I have to make a motion for that.
We don't take public comment on their motions.
That's all I can ask is would you rather it be table till the 7th or the 21st in my motion? Okay. Till the 7th.
I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Do I have a second?
You, you might want to approve it. I'm not going to, I'm, I'm not going to approve it because they don't have to do anything. They'll bring it back and they'll still get a denial. And all we'll do is push it along even further. So I'm, 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 that's why I'm not going to support yours because I don't think that if that's the route that they want to go, they will just do nothing and come back on the 7th with the exact same thing. So that's why I'm not going to make a motion to approve what you said. Then I, then I would wish that city council would at least note this. Cause I, I don't like the, the planning commission being railroaded.
And it has to be unanimous, Thad?
Because we have two abstentions, the vote needs to be three O in one direction or the other for any motion to pass.
Okay. At this point, that motion fails because it is not unanimous.
Fails for lack of second.
Fails for lack of a second. I apologize. And I'll open, I guess, the floor for another motion or further discussion about what options that we have at this point.
All right. We'll take another stab at them. This is Commissioner Anderson. Are we going to open up the public comment? Yeah.
I don't think so, because I think we understand what we need to do for a motion. And I, I'm assuming and, and I want to almost say correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming the motion or the, the comment is going to be directed on whether or not, what this motion entails or what it looks like. Is that not the case?
Yeah, I think we should let.
Well, just let us make the motion.
Are we okay to let Connor share what he's?
Go ahead. In all fairness, Connor, come on up. I think that we throw a lot of things at you. Go ahead.
So, so I know Commissioner Anderson keeps saying about the development agreement to be finalized and, and Thad has talked about that it can't be. So the whole crux of the matter is we got to go almost 1,500 feet to it. So we're requesting either general funds, as he said, because there's no funds or some sort of pioneering agreement that says if somebody ties into it, it's nothing off of the city. There's some pioneering agreement that the next developer pays us back. So I think the first motion, I guess, I'm, I'm not trying to skew the motion, but that's the whole crux of it. So to, uh, Bullock's point, it's, it's a city council issue. Is that, that's, we weren't trying to railroad. We're trying to say eventually if that's what's holding it up, it's going to hold up regardless because they're the ones who make the decision on that.
It feels to me as a commissioner, I'll go on the record with, uh, some of the comments that were here that the planning commission is being ignored and that the public is being ignored. And they want to go to city council with a denial. And I don't like that either. And so I understand the comment, why you made it. I understand why you made it. I understand that. Um, for personal reason, I have to abstain.
Connor, just so you know, the, the developer agreement part of it, I understand that, that you may not come to a resolution with staff and, and that you need to go to city council. And I get that. My, my main concerns are these other concerns with it. I, I want to see those corrected. And my, my concern with this is because I've seen this happen over and over again. We have public input. We have, you know, serious issues, especially with a, with a, a P U D where this zoning, as that, you know, as that pointed out gets, you know, it, it, it ends up having weight here, what we, what we, you know, decide and what, what goes through city council. And I don't want the exact same thing to go straight to city council and all these other recommendations that we talked about just get, you know, washed over. I understand that the, the developer agreement will probably be hashed out at city council. I understand that the, the, the developer agreement will probably be hashed out at city council. My main reason for wanting it table is because I wanted to see these other things in the plan before it goes to city council. That was my main point. It was not the developer agreement, just so you know. So I, I, I'll make a motion then to deny Z dash 23 dash 06 for the same reasons. But I will, I will tell you guys, you know, it's going to city council. I would really hope that you guys would address at, at least a minimum of these other items that we talked about. So number one, being get the density in line with PUD. Uh, remove the entry exit onto communal real and solve the, or and note the, the block wall and retention issues between stately farms. And then, yeah, the, the developer agreement is between you guys and, and city council.
Okay, I have a commotion. I'm sorry, excuse me, commotion. I have a motion for a recommendation of denial by Commissioner Anderson. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second it, but I don't want to see any of the apartments in there. That's, but I second your motion.
And Commissioner Mitchell? I'm sorry. You're right. I've got a first and a second. I've got a first by Commissioner Anderson. I have a second by Commissioner Bullock for recommendation for denial. Uh, individual voting. Schill and I are abstaining. Uh, Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
And Commissioner Mitchell?
I'm going to say aye too.
Okay. And commissioners, as a side note, anytime that you have a vote, if you feel like you want to add any reason why you're, you're voting a certain way, by all means, you can do so. So. Um, the motion at this point at a majority three zero fails, and it goes to city council with our recommendation for denial.
The motion to recommend denial to the city council passed on a three, three, two vote. Abstentions are treated as nay votes, but the record shows that you didn't vote. It was just an abstention. So it's
Okay.
So it's got to vote three. It's, it's, it's now passed to the city council with the recommendation for denial.
Perfect. Um, Melody, is there anything we need to clean up on that dumpster fire we just threw at you the last 30 seconds?
I'm, I'm good.
I want to commend the public commissioner. I, I feel like they had a very orderly and, and informative public hearing, and I appreciate that.
Alright, yes, thank you all for, uh, coming. I'm going to go ahead and call a five-minute recess. We've been here for quite a while. For any of those that want to leave, by all means, do so. I appreciate all you coming, and we'll reconvene in about five minutes. Oh, and Thad, and Corey. Melody, let me know when you get back there.
Did you hear me? I said I'm back.
I can hear you. The second time. Alright, thank you all. Sorry about that. Sorry for those of you that are on the agenda after that particular item as well. Typically, we don't take that long and, uh, I apologize. Um, we're going to go ahead and start, uh, listen to item number, or discuss item number 4B. This is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to city council for a zone change request, Z dash 22 dash 27. To update the existing planned unit development residential zoning located approximately 1050 North Main Street. The applicant is MHD5 Washington LLC, and I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, commissioners. This project was previously heard by the planning commission on January 18th, 2023. Planning commission recommended approval for this project, and then the city council approved the project on January 25th, 2023. City council revised conditions number 10 and added conditions 11 and 12, which have been added to the conditions below noted in this report. It came to staff's attention that there was an error in the formality process of not having obtained all property owner signatures during the first approval. The applicant has since obtained property owner signatures, and staff has renoticed this project to rule out any of these concerns. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash 22 dash 27 for the zone change request from planned unit development residential to the proposed plan you, planned unit development residential. And that's on to the city council based on the following findings and subject to the conditions noted below. And I just want to reiterate, no changes have been made to the plan. Just a formality process of checking all the boxes here. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Eldon. Commissioners, commissioners, any initial questions or comments?
Does this have a public hearing again or no?
Yeah. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. If there's anybody here in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item, I think you have been well versed on what to do at this point. Uh, anybody would like to speak to this item? Go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the time back over to commissioners for any comments or questions. The only, I have a clarification for me, and I have this wrong, I must. When we first saw this project, uh, I think you said it was in January. And then we had a project last week. I thought that this project butted up to the project that we saw that went to the Parkway. I must be completely wrong where I'm at. But I'm not afraid to admit it, like.
I, I think you're right. I think it is.
Because remember we had the, um,
Yeah, right there. And it's, it butts up to that one, yeah.
Yeah, I thought right about where the brown is on the, the tab there, that this project was south of that. And the project we saw, oh, there's a property line. So this map that we have in our plan indicates this takes it all the way to Washington Parkway. Is that right? Or if so, the project that we saw last week had that as a commercial piece?
No, it was offset more to the right.
It's further that, I could swear they had it on the corner. Am I wrong in this? No, no, this is the one I thought, this is what I'm saying. If you could go back, Eldon, I'll show you what I, what I meant. So the one that came last, I remember this cul-de-sac, there it's, uh, no, it was actually this one. I thought that the piece that took it all the way to the corner. Because they have like a commercial piece. Is that wrong?
You're, you're thinking wrong.
So this piece, I didn't think went all the way to the corner. I thought it stopped and let that other piece come in. But this piece goes all the way to the corner. That's correct. So I'm wrong with the other piece. That commercial corner they had isn't actually on the corner.
It, it's not on the corner of Main.
Perfect. I just wanted to clarify from my own mind, because I haven't had it wrong. Thank you. I don't have any other questions or comments or concerns for myself, anybody else on the commission, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I have to say, everybody keeps saying they want to park with these things, right? This is the first one that's got a park. It's got a dog park. Yeah? Just saying.
This is Commissioner Bullock. I make a motion to approve Z 22 dash 27. The request to approve the design use of a current PUDR zone property approximately 22 and a half acres located in the southwest corner of Washington Parkway and Main Street. Move on to city council with the two findings and 12 conditions.
Commissioner Anderson, a second.
We've got a first and a second. Individual voting. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Schill?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an a as well. Motion passes. We'll send that to city council with our recommendation for approval. Item number 5A. This is a public hearing for consideration as well and recommendation to the city council for vacating a private roadway and public utility easement, EV 2301 along lots two and three of Woolsey Blake subdivision located at 990 East George Washington Boulevard. I'll turn the time over to staff for the report.
Thank you, commissioners. The applicant is requesting to vacate the private roadway and public utility easement along lots two and three of the amended Woolsey Blake subdivision. This easement is not needed as access to the area and associated public utility easements will be to the east and west of this location. Any associated utilities have been or will be relocated to satisfy city requirements. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval on to the city council to vacate this private roadway and public utility easement, which is located on lots two and three of the amended Woolsey Blake subdivision. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thanks, Eldon. Commissioners, open the floor.
This, Schill, is so the access through Roadrunner, it's not coming off of George Washington, right?
Access for those future developments will come off of George Washington Boulevard.
About where, where we're vacating that, uh?
It's to the west, and, and both of them actually have preliminary plat approval. So you don't have to refresh your memory, but you have approved those pre-plats as well.
So was this, Commissioner Mitchell, was this just something that was overlooked during those preliminary? Because I have, I remember seeing those developments, I guess, and that. So is this something just to correct and how?
Correct.
Eliminate something that doesn't need to be there?
Just to clean it up?
Yeah.
Correct.
This is a public hearing as well. I will open the public hearing section of the meeting. For anybody who'd like to speak to this item, please come forward. And I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the time back over to commissioners for any comments, or I'll entertain a motion.
This, Schill, I'll make a motion. And I move that we, uh, allow the public roadway with utility easement vacation located on lots two and three of the amended. allow the public roadway with utility easement vacation located on lots two and three of the amended Woolsey Blake subdivision. Item five A. And send to the city council.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I second that motion. Got a motion by Commissioner Sheel. I have a second by Commissioner Mitchell. Individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Sheel.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. Item number five A passes. We'll send that to city council with our recommendation for approval. Item number six A, also a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the city council for amending zoning regulations, more specifically title nine eight eight, nine dash eight A dash six and nine dash eight B dash six. The modification regulations for size of detached accessory structures. This is something we've been working on. So I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, city council heard this or discussed this last week. And um, this was recommended to bring before the planning commission, which will then go back to them for approval. The changes to be made, I can just walk through this here on nine eight eight dash six in the modifying regulations concerns itself only with the detached structures. No residential component to this code. We're proposing to leave all of the current conditions as stated and strike letter E, which takes the fifty percent requirement out of the code. And then letter F and G then bump up in numerical order. And then looking down. So, so there's two parts to this code. The first part is the residential agriculture, which is the first one. And then this eight B is the straight residential. So it's the exact same code. All the modifying regulations stay in. We're proposing to remove letter E, which is the fifty percent requirement of the square footage. And then also striking letter G, which was a clerical error when this code was originally codified. Letter which strikes subsection D, which is actually stated as subsection C in this code. So we're just, we're cleaning up the code with that strike. Any questions, comments, concerns?
So, so we talked, this is Commissioner Anderson. So we talked about it quite a bit last time I was here and I the the only, the only issue that I have with this is that it only benefits people with, with massive lots. You know, item E, which is now, I guess, item F, which is now E. You need to have, it needs to be changed to thirty percent. Like I said before, else the average person with with a third acre lot can't build a, you know, a detached garage. I think so that would be my recommendations. I'm fine with, with what's been struck out, but I think that that needs to be changed to thirty percent. I would recommend changing it to thirty percent of the rear yard area, just so the average citizen can build a a, a detached garage. So this is not just benefiting people with, you know, one acre lots or bigger. That'd be my only recommendation. Simple change is not going to hurt anybody, but it will. If, if we, if we do just this, it's only benefiting, you know, the few people that have big massive lots. If, if we change that to thirty percent, it's going to benefit everybody.
Didn't you talk about thirty percent last time?
Thirty percent would let people put a garage in their backyard.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's a reason and Eldon maybe you might not know. But is there a reason it went back to twenty-five? That's it? Just updated it. Okay.
Yeah, but by changing it to thirty, you're going to make the building smaller. It says accessory. The provision, oh, let's see, hold on, sorry. The accessory building of a structure, including the shade structures is outlined below, located in the rear of the yard shall not cover more than twenty-five percent of the rear yard area. So you're saying move it to thirty. That makes it a bigger yardage area that you can't build in.
No, that you can build in. This is not that it can't cover, shall not cover more than twenty-five percent. It's a, it's a limitation. So, and you're saying not, it won't cover thirty percent, which means you have five percent more that you can use of your yard. I think it says the opposite. Ted, what's it say? No.
If, if you're wanting to go bigger on an accessory dwelling unit, you would want to decrease this percentage in the proposed E. So it would now go down to twenty percent. So you can, so you can build a.
Accessory buildings located in the rear yard shall not cover more than twenty-five percent. It means you're limited to twenty-five percent. Yeah. So I'm saying make it shall not cover more than thirty percent.
So you're making the building smaller.
No, you're making the available space you can build on five percent bigger.
I read it how he does, but I understand why there's confusion.
Well, I'm reading it right now. I'm trying to decide. Shall not cover more than twenty-five percent of the rear yard. So in theory, the rear yard, when we, when we define it is one hundred percent of the rear yard. And traditionally, the rear yard, you know, in our neighborhoods that were built in the eighties and nineties would have a basketball court, have a lawn, have a garden space. And then the more modern times, they've got a pavilion or a pergola in a, in a garage or whatever. And so one of the challenges that Eldon's office has is sometimes people don't have enough rear yard available for all the structures they want to put in there. Um, if you want to allow the rear yard to hold a larger garage unit on a smaller lot, you're going to need to allow more of the rear yard to be covered.
Okay, but that, that's, I was reading it the other way though.
And I, yeah, and I just, I, I did the math last time we talked about this and the average person with with a quarter acre, a third acre lot needs thirty percent to build a bill that, uh, just a regular one car, you know, garage. So I, I think that if we're going to be, you know, making this.
I agree with you. I was just, I read it the other way.
Which should benefit all the citizens of the city. People with one acres or bigger heads up.
Eldon, do you read it that way also?
Yeah, so reading that a second time, I, I would concur.
So if you want to allow a larger accessory structure, you need to allow a larger percentage of the rear yard to be covered. And then Drew and Eldon.
So I'm still kind of hung up on that, reading it the other way. Is, does it need to be reworded?
I can draw a map. I can draw a picture.
So I, I think the prior one that's striking out letter E was more of a, you know, we're comparing what you can build to what already exists. Letter, letter, this one is trying to say you just can't cover more than a certain percentage of what's defined as the rear yard. And I'm sure half the, half the debate with our, our citizens will be what, what is the rear yard? Cause if they want to count the side yard or whatever. And so Drew and Eldon have their work cut out for them just to draw a, a boundary around the rear yard. And then from there, I think what this is saying is you can do an accessory building structure, but if it covers more than twenty-five percent, it's disallowed. And so if you want it to get bigger, you can say if it covers more than thirty percent, then it's disallowed. So that gives you another five percent of, of wiggle room in the, in the rear yard.
So again, my argument here is, is just that the reason this rules in there is, is you don't want somebody to fill up the entire yard, you know, wall to wall. I get that. But with the way it's written right here, nobody can put anything usable in their backyard unless they have a half acre larger. That's all. It's just.
No, no, you're, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I just read it. I just thought, read it the other way.
I can make a motion to that if you want.
It does legally read the correct way in case this comes up five years from now, someone's coming back to this.
So it's got some negative and, you know, shall not cover more than. So it's got some just negative and positive conflict, but I, I think it's, it's clear enough that staff can apply and interpret it.
Uh, that, that's why I remember you mentioned it last time, the thirty percent. And I was like, you have more expertise than I do for sure in this. I'll defer to you. I'll look for a motion commissioners or any other comment.
Mr. Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion. To how do I want to say this? To approve amending a portion of city code, more specifically title nine, chapters eight A and eight B, section six. Modifying regulations as outlined by staff and also to change what was formerly item. Item E. That is now item or was formerly item F, which is now item E. The, the section that says that accessory buildings located in the rear yard shall not cover more than uh, currently reads twenty-five percent. I I recommend that we change that to thirty percent of the rear yard area.
And then don't we need to change E on, on the modified?
Yes, and E on the next one. So E on both sections.
Right.
To read thirty percent, you can use thirty percent of your rear yard as opposed to twenty-five percent of your rear yard.
So what that means is seventy percent of your rear yard can't be covered with a structure. Thirty percent can. One of the other things is I know that the commissioner is trying to make this available to smaller lots, but that does allow larger lots to have even bigger garages.
Yeah.
But that's, that's just how the math works out.
This sheil, I second it. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. I've got a second by Commissioner Sheel. Individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Sheel.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Hey.
I'm an I as well. Item six A passes. We'll send that to city council with our recommendation for approval or amending zoning regulations. Item number six B, uh, public hearing as well for consideration recommendation to city council for amending zoning regulations. Nine dash eight A dash eight and nine dash eight B dash seven detailed accessory units. I'll turn the time over to you, Eldon, for your report.
Thank you, commissioners. This code amendment strictly applies to the accessory dwelling units. And as you can see, we are striking the fifty percent gross square footage and leaving the six hundred and fifty square foot requirement. That's again in the residential agriculture. And then in the second part of this applies to the residential zone, which again strikes the fifty percent requirement out of the code. And again, this was heard by uh, city council or discussed last week at city council. This is where we're at on it and happy to discuss any concerns, questions, issues.
So we, we have the same thing there. Twenty-five percent of the rear yard area. Do we want to change that to fifty?
Thirty.
Or thirty? I'm sorry.
Yes. To match.
I mean, yeah, six hundred and fifty square feet is twenty by thirty-two. That's how big a building it'd be.
Yeah, I think we're just meaning thirty, right? Just to.
Does, yeah.
Is that?
Doesn't it seem like?
That's square footage or footprint? It's.
So, so the.
Well, it's livable square footage is what they're talking about.
So the, 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 the text that's removed is making it a function of the gross square footage of the residence. But what's remaining is just a square, total square feet of the ADU. So yeah, the what's being removed was a gross square footage analysis and what's being kept is simply just a gross, just a total square footage of the ADU. And so does that answer your question?
I think the question is, do we need to make that twenty-five percent thirty to be?
Yeah, it needs to be thirty, but, but here's the thing is the thirty percent is already restricting that. I mean, putting an arbitrary number on, on the ADU is silly. And, and six fifty, I mean, you can barely build a shed for somebody. I mean, I, I build ADUs for people all over town and and in, in all the various, you know, towns, every other city is a thousand square feet. Or the, or they have no restriction on it. It's just limited by like this, you know, your rear yard area. Because it, it's silly to put design requirements on something like that. And then, you know, people, they want to build a a place for their, their mother to come and live or whatever. And, and you can't do it because you got this arbitrary square footage with time. And you, you can't build anything but a little, you know, doghouse for, you know, your in-laws. So.
Wasn't six fifty an increase from what it was?
Yeah, it was six hundred before. So we got a whole whopping fifty square feet. You know, you can add a powder room to it. I, it, it, it needs, it needs to be a thousand square feet or, or don't even have a, a square foot limit and just say it's limited by the thirty percent of the backyard, which would limit it. I mean, the thirty percent of the backyard would mean that on a third acre lot, it'd be limited to a thousand square feet. On a quarter acre lot, it'd be limited to about six hundred square feet. Anyways, a half acre lot, you might get twelve hundred square feet.
Yeah, but you could do a one bedroom on six hundred and fifty feet. I, I think, I think we got to limit it to, cause I don't think we want two and three bedrooms back there.
That's what Drew was talking about. That's where the six fifty came from, was Drew was like, you can build. And he talked about, I don't know if it was his or he's familiar with being able to build six hundred and fifty ADU. I know you say no, but I know he was saying yes.
I could live in my garage and it's that size.
So I guess going back to Pete's question though, too, is that total square footage or the footprint?
It's total square footage planned submitted.
So first layer can be a garage, second layer can be a six fifty apartment. So then you got thirteen hundred square feet.
There's a height requirement too.
It just has all the height requirements of the house and so forth. There are already requirements on that, but I mean, most of the people that like, most people that come and say, hey, I want, you know, I need something for my, like, I just built an ADU and you know, husband got Parkinson's disease and they had to have a live-in nurse, you know, there had to have you know, two bedrooms and, and, and two little baths. And we barely squalls it in, in a thousand square feet, barely. And it blended in with the house. It looked great. No problem. I mean, you know, we're not talking they're adding like an apartment in their backyard. We're talking, you know, very small stuff, but it's six hundred, six fifty, it's, it's silly. Every other city in the county is a thousand. You know, or higher. It's, it's stupid to have it at six fifty.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I almost say the same thing. Like, I don't know how much I care, but I'd rather have smaller than bigger.
No, a thousand's not big, but uh.
I guess again, I'm still gonna, so that's a thousand total square foot top and bottom.
So, so if it was one that could have a garage and a ADU on top, we would not double count those, those interior square footage. We'd be looking at the perimeter for the, for the rear yard calculation. As Eldon mentioned, there are height restrictions. Um, your, your accessory dwelling units are, have to correlate to the height of your house. And so I don't know that we have very many of those, but I'm sure there's some that, there's probably some that exist. But yeah, we're not, we're not going to say you've got seven fifty on the first floor. You know, a thousand on this, on the ground floor. So you've now got seventeen fifty square footage of the backyard. We would just look at the the maximum footprint of whatever, whatever those two.
Within the height requirements.
Correct. Correct.
I think what you're worried about is much larger than what you think. A thousand square feet is very, very small. And, and again, it's going to be dictated by this rear yard thing. Somebody has a quarter acre lot, they're not, they're, they're barely going to be able to fit six hundred square feet. If they've got a third acre lot, they can fit a thousand square feet. If they got a half acre, maybe twelve hundred. And that's it. I mean, you're already limited by the, the, the rear yard thing. You don't have to have additional. All that happens when you have additional, you know, red tape to jump through like this is, is that a person can't do with their land what they, what they need to do. That's all.
All right.
So I think it's just, you, you change it to thirty percent and you change it to a thousand square feet and it self-regulates itself.
Six, six fifty is very doable. I just want to throw that out there.
And Drew was adamant about that, right?
Drew, Drew likes the six fifty number.
I really think it is too. I would, I would, I would compromise, go to eight hundred, but I think six fifty is fine.
So let me ask you. So you're a builder. So you want, you don't like six fifty because it's too small.
Yeah, I'm, I'm telling you, I build these things all the time and not one client would, would get what they wanted at a six fifty. It just wouldn't happen.
Maybe that leans to, maybe the city doesn't want these. I don't know. I mean, I'm.
Well, whether that's the case or not, it, I'm, this is people's land. We're already restricting what they can do on their, on their, you know, with, with how much of their backyard. There's, there doesn't need to be an additional layer that just makes it so somebody can't, you know, do what they want on their property. That's all. And, and I'm telling you, I mean, I do, I've done hundreds of these over the last twenty-five years, you know, I mean, and, and I do the architecture for them as well. And trust me, it's, yes, you can fit it in, in six hundred and fifty, but no one will live in it. No one wants to. You know, it's just and putting it a thousand doesn't hurt anybody. That's the thing.
You're saying putting a thousand doesn't hurt anybody because it'll self-regulate?
Yeah, it self-regulates with the, the percentage of the backyard. You know, you're not going to have this big massive thing because it's already regulated by how much of their backyard they can use.
So let's leave the backyard at twenty-five percent then.
Well, then you can't do it anyways.
So, the one thing we do know is almost all of our newly platted residential are much, much smaller yards. That's one of the ways we're accomplishing water conservation as well. And so, I think that the planning, the, the City Council will appreciate what you sent to them, but I, they're going to have to have the same discussion there, and so maybe just get them a motion, something to chew on and...
Can I have a fountain on the corner? Alright. I got a streak going and mixing projects together, so I thought I'd throw it in there. Yeah.
This Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to send to City Council that we approve amending a portion of city code, Title 9, chapter, chapters 8A, section 8, and 8B, section 7, detached accessory dwelling unit, um, as outlined by staff, but also in section 3, um, changing the square footage requirement from 650 total square feet to 1,000 square feet, and changing the percentage of backyard, um, to 30% rather than 25%. And the corresponding sections in, uh, in, in the other sections. 9, whatever, 9-8B-7, section 3 as well, the exact same, and send it to City Council for consideration.
This Sheil, I'll second.
I have a question I want to ask so bad, but I'm afraid I'm going to open a can of worms. Is a swimming pool considered a structure?
Drew and I had a very public disagreement on that. A swimming pool is a structure, but Eldon, you can tell them...
Legally, is it considered a structure?
Legally, it is. It, it meets the engineering requirements. However, we don't calculate that into the backyard requirements, it's not above grade.
Okay.
So, so a swimming pool is a structure, but for this interpretation of this code, they don't count swimming pools?
Okay.
So, the motion actually helps with the water conservancy, right? Because now you're going to have more building and less yard.
I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, I've got a second by Commissioner Sheil. Individual voting, Anderson?
Aye.
Sheil?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. That's the last item on our agenda this evening. Is there anything, uh, additionally that needs to be brought before this body from either staff or the commission? I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
This Commissioner Bullock, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
This Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
First and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you again for everybody, for coming in, for the staff for their efforts. Thank you.